I call to meet and order the Wilmington City Council like to welcome everyone that is here with us this evening and all those who are watching us at home on TV. Thank you for taking an interest in your government and it's good to be back in City Hall. So I just want to say thank you to everybody that's here today and thank you for all the precautions with all the Plexiglas here. So at this time, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Clifford Barnett to do our invocation of everyone staying or remain standing afterwards for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. God, we do thank you for allowing us to get back in the City Hall. It's been a minute, but throughout all of this time, you've been good to us, you've been kind to us, you've granted us favor, and we thank you for that. Sometimes, God, I'll be honest with you, I do a lot of complaining and I grumble because, you know, stuff's not going the way I want it to go. But then, God, I passed by a young man who was standing on the street. And then I think about what happened in Afghanistan and what's happening now in Afghanistan. I think about our brothers and sisters in Hades. And then yet, here I am complaining in Wilmington, North Carolina. Wow. So, God, we thank you for the grace that you give us. We thank you for the privileges that you grant us. We thank you for the opportunity to serve your people. May you grant us wisdom to do the things that put a smile on your face. For it's in his name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have one presentation this evening, and at this time, I'd like to recognize from the Lord Kate Fear Water and Sewer Authority, our 50th anniversary, I'd like to recognize Mr. Tim Holloman, who's the Executive Director of that organization. Tim, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'd like to give a brief timeline of the authority and then present the plaque. In 1970, it was originally created as a Wilmington-Uhandover Water and Sewer Authority. In 1971, the name changed to the Lower Cape Fear Water and Sewer Authority. In '72, Bladen, Columbus, and Penner Counties joined as members. Brunswick County joined in 1977. And in 1984, the Kings Bluff Station and Transmission Line was placed into service. Also, this year, Brunswick County becomes the first raw water customer. In 1991, some small industries along 421 became customers. And then in 1995, the city of Wilmington became a customer. Penner County began purchasing water in 2006, and 2008, the Kings Bluff Station had to expand. In 2010, the Bladen's Bluff Water Treatment Plant was completed, serving Smithfield Foods. In 2011, a 60-inch parallel intake increased capacity over 45 million to higher 96 million gallons per day. And currently, in 2022, with partnership with Cape Fear Public Utilities and Brunswick County Utilities, estimated completion of the 54-inch parallel transmission line to increase the capacity to 62 million gallons per day without additional equipment. So that's very brief. Thank you for letting me share that. And now, I'd like to present to the city of Wilmington, member and co-founder since 1970, in recognition and appreciation in keeping the Lower Cape Fear Water and Sewer Authority a viable and sustainable source of raw water for the Lower Cape Fear region. The Authority does hereby recognize that vital role that the city of Wilmington contributes to the 50-year anniversary success of the Lower Cape Fear Water and Sewer Authority. City of Wilmington Directors: Mayor Bill Saffo and Charlie Ravenbark. Thank you.
Next order of business, our Consent Agenda items 1 through 8. Are there any items that any council member would like to hear separately? If not, what are the wishes of the council?
Of emotion, we move the consent agenda.
We have a motion by Councilmember Barnett, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Haynes. Discussion. All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Item passes unanimously. That brings us to our next item of business, which is our Public Information segment. We have one speaker that has signed up to speak with us this evening, Caroline Moore Engage with his LGBTQ Center of the Cape Fear Coast, who will be speaking to us about the nondiscrimination ordinance. Welcome, Caroline.
Hey there. Good evening. My name is Caroline Moore Engage. I'm the Executive Director of the LGBTQ Center of the Cape Fear Coast, formerly known as the Frank Har Foundation, for those of y'all who knew us before. Thank you so much for your time and attention this evening. The LGBTQ Center is an organization that is committed to the dignity and equality of all people, and I'm here tonight on behalf not only of my own organization, but also of a coalition of community partners, individuals, and citizens who work every day to ensure that Wilmington is a place where we can all thrive. Right now, Wilmingtonans lack critical protections from discrimination in multiple categories based on sexual orientation, gender identity, family status, natural hair, pregnancy, among other things. We're thrilled that the city is ready to show leadership on the issues of equality and discrimination, but we have concerns about the scope of the currently proposed nondiscrimination ordinance. My organization was only notified about this on Thursday, so I've spent about the last five days in conversation with community organizations and the C-RAC. Basically, we have three primary concerns with the proposed ordinance. One is the narrowness of categories of protected people. We believe that there are broader categories that could have and should have been included in line with the 12 other municipalities in North Carolina that have passed this type of ordinance. We also believe that the absence of healthcare and employment protections included by those other jurisdictions in many cases are critical, and the lack of meaningful penalties and the absence of an enforcement plan concern us greatly. We understand that employment protections in particular are a sticking point for the city of attorney, but we're not sure about why the other issues that we raised were not incorporated, because we haven't been given any legal reason for their exclusion. There are many churches, nonprofits, businesses, and individuals who also didn't know this ordinance would be coming before council today and asked me to share some community remarks. In the interest of y'all's time and my own, I'll just give you a summary of a few of these groups: the Social Justice Advisory Group of the Unitarian Universalist Congregation of Wilmington, St. Jude's Metropolitan Community Church, the League of Women Voters of the Lower Cape Fear, Women Organizing Wilmington, and many other groups wished us to express that there are ways that this ordinance could be done in a broader and more powerful way. There's a saying that originated in the disability rights movement in the 1980s: "Nothing about us, without us." I think for many of the historically excluded communities here in Wilmington, we feel left out of what's happening here, and we think that the consequence of that is that this is not truly a nondiscrimination ordinance that will protect our people on the ground. It's not clear why the city would choose to ignore the voices of those most impacted by this issue or the guidance of their own C-RAC Advisory Board and move forward with this decision this evening. This is an issue of health and safety, it's an issue of dignity and equality, and it's something that is very important to me both as an Executive Director and as an LGBTQ person. I love this city, and I know that y'all do too, and so I hope you'll join me tonight in expressing that love for all citizens who live in Wilmington. I request that you table this ordinance and consider something that would be a truly comprehensive nondiscrimination ordinance. Thank you for your attention and your leadership.
Thank you, Caroline. Thank you. Our next item of business, our public hearings. Item PH1 is an ordinance directing the Housing Inspector to vacate, close, and repair or demolish dwelling at 917 North 7th Street as unfit for human habitation pursuant to Article 5, Chapter 16 of the City Code, and directing that a notice be placed thereon prohibiting its use or occupancy. Now, also note that the staff is requesting a continuance of this particular item, and I don't know what date certain is. Mr. Cottle?
Mr. Mayor, we had an error in advertising between the convention center and the City Hall. We respectfully ask that you just continue this item to September 7th so that we can properly notify the public hearing.
Okay. We have a motion to continue this item to September the 7th. We have a motion by Councilmember O'Grady, seconded by Councilmember Ravenbark. All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Item passes unanimously. That brings us to our next item, which is item PH2A, which is an ordinance permitting the official zoning map of the city to rezone property containing 0.28 acres of land located at 2166 Dexter Street and 2157 Wrightsville Avenue from CS Commercial Services and CB Community Business. Wrightsville Avenue Corridor Overlay to ONI-1 CD Office and Institutional District for a primary and secondary school. At this time, I'd like to recognize interim City Manager, Mr. Tony Cottle. Mr. Cottle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You have items 2A and 2B that will be companion items. You will have to deal with the ordinance first, and if you pass the ordinance, then you will have the special use permit to be considered as a secondary item. Mr. Patrick O'Mahony, our associate planner, will overview this item for us.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. The site is located between Wrightsville Avenue and Dexter Street and contains approximately one-half acre. This map shows the general vicinity surrounding the request. And these are photos of the subject property and surrounding uses. And these are photos of adjacent land uses looking across Kent Street and along Dexter The site's currently zoned CS Commercial Services and CB Community Business and is part of the 1945 corporate limits. The site's surrounded by CB uses to the west, CS uses to the north, ONI-1 zoning to the south and east. The applicant proposes to rezone a portion of the site from CS Commercial Services and CB Community Business to ONI-1 CD Conditional District for a primary and secondary school. The applicant also intends to use the remaining portion of the property for a daycare facility in an existing structure. This portion of the project is located within the Wrightsville Avenue Corridor Overlay District and requires a special use permit. Parking is proposed between the two uses with a dedicated drop-off and pickup area. A one-way loop driveway entrance on Kent Street is proposed, and seven parking spaces are provided. The Wrightsville Avenue 230 Plan recommends maintaining commercial uses at this location, and it calls for the protection enhancement of the unique character of the Wrightsville Avenue Corridor while promoting pedestrian connectivity and visually appealing and appropriate commercial development. The site is located near an urban neighborhood known mixed-use center and within a live-work-innovation zone area of opportunity on the Create Wilmington Comprehensive Plans Growth Strategies map. The proposal is consistent with recommendations of the Create Wilmington Comprehensive Plan. Plan calls for areas well suited for infill development to be developed in a way that maintains or enhances the desired character of the surrounding area. It also calls for plans that improve access to goods, services, and amenities improves the overall quality of life in the vicinity. The proposed school and daycare are in close proximity to existing services and located in a central location to serve the surrounding residential neighborhoods. Staff believes the proposed zoning amendment is consistent with several of the Create Wilmington Comprehensive Plan policies, Wrightsville Avenue 230 Plan, and the city's adopted focus areas. If City Council recommends approval of the request, staff suggests the conditions outlined in the case summary be applied. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions, and the applicants here as well.
Any questions of staff? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This time, I'd like to recognize the applicant.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. I was in this exact same place about six, seven years ago, so I'm back. Lot of growth happening. Peace Rose Montessori. We opened, this is our 10th year of business. We opened downtown on 14th and Market, and then we moved to Wrightsville Avenue. We started with a few children, and now we want to serve ages nine months to 15 years. So we are definitely growing as one of the only private Montessori schools in town that would move up to the middle school ages. This is our staff. We've grown. And these are all of the people that are involved in caring for children in the Wilmington area at our school. This is our current location. We call it the Pine Building. It's right on Wrightsville and Dawson, and we've been here for about six or seven years. And what's wonderful is the proposals that we're proposing for conditional rezoning and the special use permit are adjacent to this property. They touch property lines, so it's one campus. It's still small, we're a small private school, but we've been successfully operating under a special use permit at this location, following and adhering to any rules or regulations put upon us. This is what we call the Camellia House. This is a residential that we're moving to commercial. It is in 1900, it was built in 1900, so you can imagine how sweet it is, but how challenging it has been to bring it up to code, but we're doing it. We started this project last November, in the midst of everything, and we've still been thriving as a school. This is the Dexter Street building. This was commercial. It actually was a school for two years, but it was not regulated. So we are coming in as a school, doing all the right things. This would house our first through seventh graders with about 43 students. Again, a very small school, but we've attained this building and been using it for like office space and storage, and so we're really excited to see it come to fruit with children. So the zoning changes, like Patrick said, is that we would like to change the current CS zoning of the Dexter Street building to ONI. Our property adjacent from this building at 2016 Kent Street is also ONI as well. This will allow us to operate our small private school and move forward. This is our site plan. You also saw it on Patrick's as well. And this is actually one property owned by the same owner, and we have a lease-to-purchase offer, so I hope we can call this our forever home. The biggest thing with schools is being able to have predictable drop-off and pickup, which we do. Between these two buildings, we would have staggered drop-off between 7:45 and 8:15, 8 o'clock and 8:30. We have walkers, we have bikers, we have carpoolers, we also have siblings. Like I said, at the 2173 Wrightsville building, we've been successfully operating the conditions put upon the special use permit there for drop-off and pickup. And we also have great communication with our families and parents to ensure that this happens, and if it doesn't, we approach them with direct communication. This is a beautiful map that was made for us. As far as neighborhood impact, we have a lot of families that live in the neighborhood. The families were thrilled when we said, hey, we want to open this space, and they're going to bike, they're going to walk, they're here. And we really see this enhancing the area. Wrightsville Avenue is growing to the point where Castle Street is growing, we're just right in the middle there. So we're really excited to be in this area and close to downtown. And that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Are there any questions for the applicant? Yes, sir.
School for nine months to 15 years old?
Correct. So currently, we serve ages three years old to sixth grade, so 12. So we're adding an infant program, which is nine months to three years, and then adding a middle school program, which is 12 years to 15 years.
And you're saying you can get like 43 students, or you have 43 now?
So at all three locations, when we open and operate, we would have 45 in one building with two primary classrooms, which is at 3 to 6. In the white building on Wrightsville Avenue, we would have about 24 students, ages nine months to three years. And then in the Dexter building, we would have grades first through seventh, about 43 of them. Our middle school, this is our first year, so we have seven middle schoolers, and we're proposing, not now, but in the future, to build on our Kent Street lot to eventually extend the middle schoolers to that space, and that would be our one cohesive campus.
Mr. O'Grady?
Hi.
Hi.
I drive by all the time. Pretty building. You have a daycare center. You're going to have less than 30?
Yes.
Okay. Because they've told us that there's a standard, and it's not applicable, and I was wondering why, and that's why.
Yeah. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
This time, I'm going to open a public hearing and ask if anybody in the public wishes to speak on item PH2A. Seeing none, are there any further questions from council? And Madam Clerk, have you received anything? Again, thank you. All right. We'll now close the public hearing and ask for the wishes of council. We have a... We have a motion by Councilmember Barnett, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Haynes. Discussion. All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Sorry. Sorry, Mr. Barnett. I jumped ahead of you.
I move to approve the proposed amendment to rezone property located at 2166 Dexter Street and 2157 Wrightsville Avenue from CS Commercial Services and CB Community Business and ONI-1 CD Office and Institutional District to allow a primary school and find it to be consistent with the relevant policies in the Comprehensive Plan, based on the application material and the information provided at the public hearing and in the staff report, and to find approval of the rezoning request is reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons: the proposed school is in close proximity to existing services and located in a central location to serve the surrounding residential neighborhoods.
Okay. And with that, all in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Item passes unanimously on first reading. Is there a motion to waive second reading?
No.
Motion made by Councilmember Anderson.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember O'Grady. Discussion. All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Item passes unanimously on first as well as second reading. Now, we'll go to the next item, which is item PH2B, which is the resolution for a special use permit for property located at 2157 Wrightsville Avenue to allow a child daycare in the Wrightsville Avenue Corridor Overlay zoning district. I will note that all those wishing to speak need to be sworn in by the city clerk, Mrs. Sibberry, at this time up front.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. O'Mahony will review this item as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As previously mentioned in my first presentation for the rezoning, there is an associated special use permit with this request. It's shown on the site plan here. The property is located within, is zoned CB and located within the Wrightsville Avenue Corridor Overlay, which requires a special use permit for the operation of a child daycare. I'm happy to go through the entire report again, if you would like, or I'm happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Does council have any questions? Any additional questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Recognize the applicant again. Hate to make you keep coming up here.
I won't let you watch my presentation again, but I will say, pretty much the exact same thing we've done in the past, 2173 Wrightsville is CB in the Waco Overlay Wilmington 2020 Comprehensive Plan. So we're literally just recreating this on the other side of the street, and we would love your support. Do you have any questions, council and mayor?
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, if I could just remind council that information from the applicant and staff that goes to whether or not this would create any danger, whether or not all requirements are met, whether or not there would be any injury to the value of adjoining property, and if it's in harmony with that area, that's the information that I would recommend that council look for in the presentation from the applicant.
Well, I think I've seen the applicant. I think you've made a great presentation, and I'm happy with what I've seen. I don't know if anybody has any questions. Mr. Anderson?
Go over just with me a little bit the play area, I guess, just tiny bit of concern about having children right by Wrightsville Avenue. What is the kind of, I can see where it's marked generally, but I'm just curious what your plan is.
Right. So currently, there is a fence line around the residential home at 2157 Wrightsville. We're actually proposing to move the fence line in so that each door of the building actually has a gate and then has another fence. So it's almost like doubly safe. Originally, we had looked at putting some kind of like concrete or stronger fence line in front of the fence where Wrightsville is in case a car, you know, swerved off, but it's about, gosh, I would say 15 feet from the street line. So we feel safe about it. I would love to hear any other concerns that you have. Like I said, our other property is on Wrightsville Avenue, and we've been able to safely secure children within the fence line, within the door system. We do have to pass fire and health code. Fire has very strict stipulations on egress and door handles and all of that. And like I said, we like to go above and beyond with safety measures because that's the integrity of our business and our school. So we've been trying to do everything right, but if you have suggestions, I'd be happy to listen.
No, I think what I hear you saying is you're going to have kind of a little bit smaller fenced area within another fenced area.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, sir. This is a very historic neighborhood, and I think what you're doing is a perfect lifting it up even further.
I agree. We love the history of the area. Our other building used to be the community center and had a pool in back. This White House was the boss's house, which I think is pretty great during the time of the mill. And if you go back on Kent Street, of course, there's all those small Kent Street cottages. So when we came across these properties, it was during the pandemic. We actually thrived tremendously, having students enroll during COVID as a small school. And these two lots were just not looking great, and we really have done some great work to it, and we'll continue to do great work. So the idea that, you know, these buildings are facing Wrightsville Avenue, that's kind of the face of Wrightsville Avenue, it does look a lot better since we've moved in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. O'Grady?
I'm just going to ask you a couple of questions, because our attorney is afraid we don't touch all the boxes.
Ask away.
So let me ask you. Do you think anything, after you build this, you think anything you do here will injure the public health or safety if it's located there?
Will endanger?
Yeah.
No. I think it was more dangerous before we got there.
Okay.
So like I said, we have the site plan here that the city zoning is putting on us regarding parking, regarding markings, regarding ADA accessibility in both buildings. So it's enhancements. You know, when we moved in, there was bottles and glass and weeds to your knees, and so, you know, that seemed like a danger. So us upfitting it actually reduces the danger and risk, especially with families coming and traveling. And this directly leads to Wallace Park, and it's in the neighborhood where I live. And then it also leads to Castle Street, which is bustling and booming. So our hope is that this enhances the neighborhood for families and foot traffic.
Okay. There is a number of conditions and specifications in our report, and the staff has indicated you'll comply with them. That's why I asked you about the 30, because that wasn't clear. So we have that in the report. That's the second one. Third one, you're an adjoining home landowner, so do you think having this will substantially injure the value of adjoining properties?
No. If anything, I think it will continue to help the neighborhood grow. Like I said, a lot of our families that live in the Carolina Place, Brookwood neighborhood attend our school. Not all, we have families from all over town. And then on our adjacent property, 2173 Wrightsville, it's actually, there's a city creek right behind there, and our elementary students are part of the Cape Fear River Creek Watchers Program, and they'll be able to continue to maintain that creek. So the fact that there are people there in that area taking care of the land, we also are very much into gardening. We have chickens, we have bunnies, we have plants. One thing that was proposed to me during a TRC meeting was continuing to add native plants into our area, which our landscaper is already on, Atamo at Itman Landscaping. So we have a really good team to make and beautify this space.
So the staff report also tells us that your plans are in compliance with all of our development plans. Do you think it'll be in harmony with the area you're locating it in?
Yeah. This, we aren't building a five-foot-tall building, right? We're not putting in a car wash that's going to be an eyesore. You know, this is a neighborhood, school, families need care, schools are never going to go out of business, so I agree with...
So, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. We check the boxes?
Thank you. Anything else, council? Wonderful.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to open up the public hearing and ask if anybody in the public wishes to speak on item PH2B. Are there any further questions from council? I will now close the public hearing and ask for the wishes of council. We have a motion to approve by Mayor Pro Tem Haynes, seconded by Councilmember Barnett. Discussion. Discussion. All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously. Okay. Next item business, our ordinances. I will announce that the following public hearing is continued from council's August third, twenty-twenty-one meeting. An item appeared on the agenda as a regular ordinance. However, the public hearing is still open, and item oh one is an ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city Wilmington rezoned property located at twelve fifteen Orange Street from R five residential to R three Central City Residential District. In this time, I'd like to recognize Mr. Cottle, Mr. Cottle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you noted, this is a public hearing that's continued from the last meeting. Brian Chambers, our senior planner, will overview the item for you and bring us back up to date.
Good evening, mayor, members of council. This item was continued to allow time for the applicant to explore the possibility of providing a preservation easement on the property, which I believe they have accomplished. That's, I don't have any other update other than that unless you have some questions for me. The applicant is here to, is also present to confirm what I just told you.
Very good. Any questions for staff?
Thank you.
Thank you. This time I'd like to recognize the applicant.
Nice to see everyone again. My name is Joe DiLiberto, and I'm the applicant at twelve fifteen Orange Street. And I hope you guys will all be happy that we did go out and get the preservation easement, and it's signed, and twelve fifteen will stand forever.
Great.
So if there's any other questions I could answer, I'd be happy to.
Any questions for Joe? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Have a great night.
Thank you. Since the public hearing was open, I will ask if anyone in addition wants to speak. Come forward.
Good evening, city council. Travis Gilbert, Historic Wilmington Foundation. I just wanted to go on the record and commend Joe and the LLC for their hard work in negotiating that easement. I want to commend Councilman O'Grady for mentioning this, and I just want to say that all three parties fulfill their obligation here in terms of historic preservation in the city of Wilmington. City council was a great advocate for preservation, the leadership of Councilman O'Grady. Historic Wilmington Foundation negotiated that easement, and the property owner understood that this cultural resource is contributing resource, and the Wilmington National Register Historic District was worthy of preservation and an easement by our organization. So thank you for your leadership. Thank you, Joe. And Historic Wilmington Foundation is here in the future to replicate this process to save our contributing resources. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Okay. Madam clerk, did we receive any additional comments?
No.
Okay. Very good. Any further questions from council? Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for the wishes of council, and I will note that whoever makes the motion must read a consistent statement for the record. We have a motion to approve by councilmember O'Grady, second by Mayor Pro Tem Haynes. Mr. O'Grady, will you please read the consistent statement?
Yes, I'd like to enter my motion that I move to approve the proposed amendment to rezone property located at twelve fifteen Orange Street from R five residential to R three Central City residential, and find it to be consistent with the relevant policies in the comprehensive plan based on the application materials and the information provided at the public hearing and in the staff report, and to find approval of the rezoning request is reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons. The proposed rezoning would allow for a lot configuration that is consistent with the development pattern in the area. And thank you for agreeing to preserve the property.
Okay. All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously on first reading. Is there a motion to waive second reading?
No move.
Motion made by councilmember Anderson, second by councilmember Ravenbark. Discussion. All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item passes unanimously on first as well as second reading. That brings us to our next item business, which is item oh two, which is an ordinance making supplemental appropriations in the amount of eighty thousand of North Carolina drug tax revenue to the special purpose fund and ten thousand dollars of donations to the general fund for the purchase and equipping of two standalone trailers for the Wilmington Police Department. This time I'd like to recognize interim city manager, Mr. Tony Cottle, Mr. Cottle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Assistant Chief Dave Euler will overview this item for us.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The police department is requesting the appropriation of eighty thousand dollars from the NC drug tax to be used to purchase two standalone trailers, one of them being a concession stand that we will use for our community engagement. It will replace our current community engagement truck, which is a nineteen ninety-nine vehicle. So we're going to replace it, modernize it, and use it for some of our community engagement and outreach. We're also looking to purchase a rehab trailer for our officers when we have to stay on scenes for an extended period of time. It gives them a place to go where they can relax, unwind, to get back out there and do their job. There's a ten thousand dollar donation from an estate to help pay for this.
Okay. Any questions, deputy chief? Okay. Thank you, sir. Any further questions from council? Okay. What are the wishes of council? We have a motion to approve by councilmember O'Grady, second by councilmember Barnett. Discussion. All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously on first reading. Is there a motion to waive second reading? Motion made by councilmember Ravenbark.
Second.
Second by councilmember Anderson. Discussion. All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously on first as well as second reading. Brings us to our next item business, which is item oh three, which is an ordinance making supplemental appropriation in the amount of ten thousand to the special purpose fund for the purchase of video production equipment and furniture for the police department utilizing ten thousand dollars of North Carolina drug tax revenue. This time I'd like to recognize interim city manager, Mr. Cottle, Mr. Cottle.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Assistant Chief Euler will overview this item.
Thank you. Police department's requesting the use of ten thousand dollars from NC drug tax to purchase video equipment so we can use to make our public service announcements and to tell our story from the police department. This money will be used to purchase camera equipment, microphones, and furniture, and teleprompters.
Okay, very good. Any questions, deputy chief? Okay. Thank you, sir. Any further questions from council? Hearing number one, what are the wishes of council in respect to the item? We have a motion made by councilmember O'Grady, second by councilmember Barnett. Discussion. All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously on first reading. Is there a motion to waive second reading?
No move.
Motion made by Mayor Pro Tem Haynes, second by councilmember Barnett. Discussion. All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item passes unanimously on first as well as second reading. That brings us to our next item, which is item oh four, which is an ordinance appropriating four hundred and fifty-two thousand, six hundred and three dollars of fund balance from the fleet maintenance and replacement fund to purchase an air truck. This time I'd like to recognize interim city manager, Mr. Cottle, Mr. Cottle.
Old habits never die, do they? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Interim deputy city manager Jennifer Moretti will overview this item for us.
Good evening, mayor and council. This item is requesting an appropriation of four hundred and fifty-two thousand, six hundred and three dollars from the fund balance of the fleet maintenance fund. This is actually a reapropriation. This funds were in fiscal year twenty-one, but because the truck will not be delivered until fiscal year twenty-two, that is when we need to record the expense and the appropriation needs to follow. So we are just asking to reappropriate these funds from fiscal year twenty-one into fiscal year twenty-two to cover that expense.
Okay. Any questions for staff? Okay. Thank you. What are the wishes of council in respect to the ordinance? We have a motion by councilmember O'Grady. Hit the second one, you're in the second. The second one, seconded by councilmember Ravenbark. Discussion. All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously on first reading. Is there a motion to waive second reading? Motion made by councilmember Ravenbark, second by councilmember Barnett. Discussion. All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item passes unanimously on first as well as second reading. Brings us to our next item business, which is item oh five, which is an ordinance making a supplemental appropriation in the amount of a hundred and forty-four thousand to the golf course fund for a gold tee renovation at Wilmington Municipal Golf Course. This time I'd like to recognize interim city manager, Mr. Cottle, Mr. Cottle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Amy Beatty, our community services director, will overview this item.
Good evening, mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and city council. We are asking council to appropriate one hundred and forty-four thousand dollars from the golf course's undesignated fund balance to the golf course expenditure fund for a project to expand the gold tee box in order to accommodate for increased play and a better quality turf. This item should look very familiar to you as you saw it at your June twenty-twenty-one council meeting where we asked the same of you, and city council adopted that ordinance. Staff was unable to acquire bids and execute a contract prior to the end of the fiscal twenty-one year, and therefore, according to statutes, funds have to revert back to the undesignated fund balance. So tonight, we are asking you to repeat the same budgetary action that you took in June. We are not asking for any additional money to be appropriated, but just the same action that you took in June. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any question for staff? Okay. Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
What are the wishes of council? We have a motion to approve by councilmember Ravenbark, second by councilmember Anderson. Discussion. All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously on first reading. Is there a motion to waive second reading? Motion made by councilmember O'Grady, second by councilmember Anderson. Discussion. All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously on first as well as second reading. That brings us to our next item business, which is item oh six, which is an ordinance amending the land development code, chapter eighteen, by repealing the current land development code in its entirety and replacing it with a new land development code. This time I'd like to recognize assistant city manager, Mr. Tony Cottle, Mr. Cottle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you'll note, about half the staff is walking forward, represented by our planning director, Mr. Glenn Harbeck.
Thank you, Mr. Cottle. Good evening, council members, members of council and mayor. In a couple of minutes, Ron Satterfield will come up here and present some changes that have been made in the recent past that we hope will find a good reception. My role here in the next couple of minutes is to try to frame the discussion. To do that, I would ask you several questions. Does the new land development code do a better job of protecting trees? Does it offer greater opportunities for missing middle housing, which we've described as accessory dwelling units, duplexes, triplexes, townhomes, et cetera? Does it provide incentives for affordable housing, incentives that this council's been asking for, for some time? Does it reduce the amount of asphalt associated with oversized parking lots? Does it make development review more streamlined by reducing special use permits, by eliminating discretionary reviews, and by eliminating subjective language throughout the entire Does it seek to improve the appearance and function of our major streets? That's something we were asked if we do nothing else, at least try to make our streets as presentable as they can be to visitors and residents alike. Does it encourage greater development density where it belongs, near services, jobs, and transit? Does it promote walkability, bikeability, and transit use over greater traffic congestion? Does it reflect the wishes of thousands of Wilmingtonans who expressed their preferences very clearly during the development of the twenty-sixteen comprehensive plan, and is affirmed recently by a citizen survey in the city newsletter? Lastly, is the ordinance that you're considering tonight, is it perfect? No. Can it be improved? Yes, endlessly. But does it move the needle in the right direction in terms of our city and its future? I would offer a clear yes to that question. I'll conclude by mentioning that the new LDC, if it is adopted tonight, that this will not be the be-all, end-all for this particular code. Between the time of its adoption and its effective date, we will continue to have a glitch board on the third floor of three oh five, and anybody who identifies an error in the code, whether it's inconsistent, or the language is broken, or something else is troubling about it, we're going to keep a board that will record any of those glitches, and that's part of a debugging process that is normal. And finally, even after the code goes into full swing after its effective date, we will be bringing back what we call, you'll maybe remember these from probably almost ten years ago, code cleanups. And code cleanups are where we identify several issues that have been brought forward that we can bring back to you all at once and make changes to the code in a more efficient way to make sure that it's functioning the way it should. Well, with that said, I'll adjourn, and I'll turn it over to Ron.
Good evening, mayor, members of city council. Proud to be here tonight. I do see a light at the end of the tunnel. I just hope it's not a train coming my way. So as, wanted to start out with this slide here, just to kind of, and you've seen some rendering of this before, but it's to talk about the progress. May of twenty sixteen, the comprehensive plan was adopted, and as Mr. Harbeck has indicated, we had about four thousand people, citizens, participate in that plan. We use that comprehensive plan as the building block and foundation for the land development code that you all have been working on for a long, long time. You've had lots of presentations from us. We had nine meetings with our, the mayor-appointed LDC ad hoc committee. Ms. Haynes, Mr. Barnett, and Mr. Anderson, I want to say thank you for your hard work on that. It was a lot of hard work. You guys did a good job directing us and providing some insight, and I really appreciate that, and I think all of staff does as well. We've had over twenty presentations going back to about twenty-eighteen with city councils. Some of it was topic-specific, and this is, you know, things like, this is what we're thinking about doing, to just the release of each article as they came forward. We've had six planning commission presentations for each article, including all the articles that were released. We've had a joint presentation with our council and planning commission on tree preservation. We had releases of articles in February twenty-twenty. The composite draft was released in early April twenty-one. We also had as many as six individual meetings with stakeholders and more if we talk about individual people, but those stakeholder groups included BASE, our Realtors Association, the Wilmington Tree Commission, Alliance for Cape Fear Trees, and the Affordable Housing Coalition. And at the end, we also had three work sessions with our planning commission and city council, two in June, one in July, and two of those meetings were your legislative hearing for the adoption of this code. And that said, the planning commission does recommend approval of the land development code, and they have found it reasonable in its public interest. But that said, I want to move, just bring council up to speed on some changes that we've made since your meeting in July, on July twenty-third. And the first one is regarding accessory dwelling units. You may recall there have been several conversations on the parking for those, and based on the feedback and the information that we believe we heard, we have eliminated the off-street parking requirement for accessory dwelling units. We also eliminated language that prohibited the separate utility meter on that. Outdoor seating and activity areas, the main change there, actually, there was no change to the standards. It was just reformatted. You may recall in that presentation in July that it was a little bit difficult to follow, so we re-formatted it, but there were actually no changes, and we've inserted a table into the code for better use. Portable storage containers, we've actually inserted that use into the accessory use table or temporary use table, excuse me, and it would be allowed in all districts for up to six months in a rolling three hundred and sixty-five day period. We've amended our definitions for outdoor seating and activity areas. That was, the direction we got was to look at the language in our, of how the state handles defining indoor, outdoor for smoking. You know, the statute that they passed, what, ten years ago or so about regarding what's smoking inside? So we've used that language now to better define what is inside versus outside. So we've used that language now to better define what is inside versus outside. We've refined our definition for nursery and greenhouse based on the information and the questions that we heard in your July twenty-third meeting, and based on some feedback from the planning commission, we have redefined our community boating facility, basically inserting that it was regarding five waterfront lots. That was some language that was added to that. So that was our changes. We did have some information, want to talk about parking real quickly. We did have, meeting yesterday, Mr. Grady asked for consideration for parking, trying to establish some minimum parking standards. Initially, our code had, we had eliminated not requiring minimum parking standards for commercial use of citywide. Staff had recommended that because of various reasons, including our land is finite and parking is not always the highest best use of the property. Parking, having minimum parking standards can hamper redevelopment and infill development, and it can also impact small businesses. It can reduce, excuse me, it can encourage tear downs in our areas. Someone trying to meet minimum parking standards, they can't meet it on their particular piece of property, so they buy the house or the structure next door to meet our minimum standards, and they tear that down. Certainly can go forward by not having minimum parking standards. It can reduce impervious surface areas. It can certainly provide opportunities to increase tree preservation and more open space if we don't have minimum parking standards. And driveway cuts contribute to the loss of about three park, on-street parking spaces where they're available. It also can, each driveway cut potentially have, you have vehicular and pedestrian conflicts where a sidewalk may cross the driveway. And then we also have no minimum parking standards in urban mixed use, and at this point, we're not aware of any problems that creates. I just want to provide that information, just as a background to help council and the citizens maybe understand, and Mr. Grady and I talked about this briefly, understand why we had proposed not having minimum standards. That said, we have addressed the request from Mr. Grady to provide some alternate to minimum parking standards. You do have as a handout, and roughly, the changes would be if the commercial business is within six hundred and fifty feet of a residentially zoned property, then, and they don't have, they're not within forty percent of our maximum parking, then they would need to provide us a parking study to show that they have adequate parking. There's information in our current, it references the parking study that would be, that was already referenced in our code. And there were some minor domino effect on that, so you've been, just tried to create or clean up some of that language. So that's what we have as far as the changes that's been made since July twenty-third. And again, staff does recommend approval of this code. You have a unanimous recommendation from planning commission, and we do believe it's reasonable and in the public interest. And certainly, you have my entourage, the staff here. Should there be any questions by city council, we'd be glad to try to answer any of them.
Sure, we have a couple. Mr. Anderson?
Just a couple on stuff you just hit on, to start with. I'm a little, I mean, I don't, I understand what Mr. Grady's after, and I'm not sure I'm against it or for it. It just feels like maybe it should go on the glitch board. I mean, because it came up yesterday, I mean, if you run examples, I mean, what happens, I mean, RX Restaurant doesn't exist in this, in that environment, correct?
I'm sorry, I was asking Dylan a question.
Well, I'm just saying, every time I park at RX Restaurant, if you know where that is, I park in front of a house almost every time. So that restaurant would not be allowed to exist.
RX, urban mixed use zoning? RX is, I know, RX is urban mixed use, so we, on-street, excuse me, we don't have any minimum parking standards.
It's not everywhere.
But it's not everywhere. Our central business district in urban mixed use, we do not have minimum parking standards.
Okay.
Our proposal had been not to require minimum parking standards at all, but we were trying to provide some alternate stamps, some alternate language for Mr. Grady, and that's what we've been presented.
Well, maybe, like, where, Kevin, where, where do you foresee that? I'm just needing, assessing exactly.
Well, along most of our, our, what we call our collective streets, there's businesses on the fronts of those streets, and most of them have parking lots. But immediately behind most of those businesses, there's residences. So right now, people go into those businesses, park in their parking lots. If we pass this as it was originally proposed, any of those businesses could decide they need that parking space for their business, and they're going to increase it, and their directions to their customers would be, we'll just park on the public streets around us, which is a residential neighborhood.
Give me a street, is that just something you're thinking of? Because what you're saying is you're looking down the road, you're not looking at something current.
I can tell you, it's already happened along Market Street, where a business decided to cut back on their parking, and then their customers and their staff started parking in front of residents, and it disturbed the residents. I mean, it's burdening the residents with the commercial parking. So my concern was, the code we were presented matched the presentation we got, which was the major parking lots, where there's clearly way more space than they usually need. And this was trying to get them to reduce that. And I think it works for the major parking lots. I don't think it carefully considered the impact it would have all along our collective streets, where those streets have residential right behind them. Think of, well, my favorite is Seagate. We've heard a lot about noise from Seagate because there's now a bar there. Suppose the bar closes their parking lot and says, well, we're a neighborhood business, go park in the neighborhood. I'm not going to be here. You guys are going to be here when they bring the torches and pitchforks because you pushed all those cars into their neighborhood. That's, you don't want that problem to happen, because that business owner will say, hey, you allowed me to do that. We've got to consider that. And what this does is, it's, they'll have reduced parking, but they don't have to go, they still can reduce their parking, right? Because they can go down to forty percent of whatever the maximum was. So they could have less parking if they felt they didn't need as much, but they can eliminate it. And you've got to try to protect the nearby residential areas, and that's, that's what I'm concerned about here. I don't think it considered the impact outside of the major parking lots on what it would do all around the city, where there's businesses with parking lots right next to residential.
So Ron, if in a, is, in the new code, it would be, is it still like a restaurant, for example, based on square footage, you get so many parking spaces or occupancy or...
We have, yes, or to answer the question, we have, in the new code, we have parking established, a maximum amount of parking provided per, in restaurant case, it would be the number of seats or X square foot minus kitchen and bathrooms.
And whatever that number is, now you're, under the change, you're proposing potentially forty percent of that number?
Correct. If they're not within forty, and we found, the slides up on the screen now to show what the change is, if it's not within forty percent of the maximum number of parking spaces that would be permitted, then the property owner, developer, whomever, will need to provide us a parking study that's outlined here on this page, parking study to show that they are adequately parked. And that would be if you were there within six hundred and fifty feet of a residential district. Six hundred and fifty feet is roughly two blocks, one-eighth of a mile, I'm rounding slightly, but I'm just kind of giving you an idea of how far that is. It could have an impact for small businesses trying to occupy a building. Example, classic example I always think of is someone trying to open up a restaurant, and maybe the code would, if we had a minimum standard, would require ten parking spaces. There's six parking spaces on the site, so that restaurant can't locate there, so they have to go find somewhere else. Then the building sits vacant, derelict, you know, is that really improving the neighborhood? So that was, you know, some things that as far, when I've mentioned earlier about how that could impact a small business if we didn't have, if we had minimum parking standards, just as an example. I believe Mr. Grady was looking for some type of compromise or some solution that would help, maybe, maybe not establish a minimum, but provide for all cases, but if they were within a certain distance of a residentially zoned property, there is at least some thought process on how they can adequately park the spaces. If I'm not putting words in your mouth, but that's kind of what we interpreted yesterday.
Because originally written, they didn't have to have any parking.
I understand the concern. I guess really what I'm after is, do you feel, you feel comfortable, you've had enough time to really, you're, this, this works for you, rather than adding it in a month or two?
It's...
Once you've had time to really flesh it out.
It's certainly better than our current code. What we didn't do, what we didn't have time in a day was turn around and look at every single use and see what the, what the, what an appropriate minimum parking standard would be, and for every single use that we, that we have in the list. We felt like this was a good, quick turnaround, should council want to consider it again in reaction, trying to provide some information for, that Mr. Grady requested yesterday. So we do think it's better than what our current code has, because current code does have minimum standards. And we also have reduced the maximum standards in many instances, including retail and some of the other, you remember the big, the slide presentation I've done with all the minimum, the maximums, and what the proposed code, et cetera, would do? So it is better, in our opinion, than what we currently have in our code.
And better than what you would propose?
I think that's to be determined.
Okay. You mentioned the inclusion of the storage container, which I, I understand, but I'm curious, did, is there language regarding the location of it, or any buffering?
Hmm, no, sir. It's not. They're temporary, so we wouldn't want to require a buffer.
So a neighbor six, has to look at it for six months?
That is, that would be allowed should the code, right now, there aren't really no standards for that. I think we use the shipping container requirements, but there are no clear-cut standards for how they could locate. And the proposed code, by the way, before we installed, inserted, there was nothing about them. I believe that was passed on from a council member for us taking consideration.
I don't like that. I mean, it ought to be, if a boat has one of storage, a boat has to be behind the, the property, behind the line of the house, or at least shorten it or something. I mean, it's going to get, it's just going to get abused. I've already, I was, I thought there was issues with it now. I see them there for forever, and rusted, doesn't look like that pretty when you ha, you know, it's a reclaimed one from Maersk.
Sure. And I thought process behind that. We did initially propose, I think, three months with an opportunity to get a three-month extension. You have varying types of projects. You have the someone who may be moving, they needed a week, you know, to move in their furniture or whatever case may be. You also have folks who might be working on a construction project, reg, cutting the home, and they need to put some material somewhere, and they have their stuff in the, in the, in the pod out in the driveway for a period of time. So that was kind of, we debated, was it three months? Is it six months? Well, if we allow three months and then allow a three-month extension, why not just say six months of a rolling? So that's, that's where we landed on six months.
What happened to six months?
Six months, that is the timeframe. It has to be removed.
No appeal?
They can always appeal to the Board of Adjustment.
So, okay, so businesses, they can, it can't be permanent. It can't be, it's a six-month thing.
Correct.
Okay. To Glenn's points on, I think he mentioned, I may get the language wrong, glitch board and talked about code cleanups. You know, I think we all agree that we're going to find some unintended consequences here when everything, all the layers meet on some of these projects. We're going to find things where just something small kills it. What will be the, so the mechanism to deal with that will be code cleanups, which I would think is what Glenn used, or let's get back to the first, to the glitch board. So we would, when it goes, comes around time to enact that, we might consider those then?
Not sure I follow your question, but we would identify...
The glitch board, as, as things come up between now and enactment...
Okay, yes.
Would we, things that y'all have parsed out in that timeframe, we would consider it then?
We would just, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Joy, but we would take them, bring them to council, and council could vote on them as amendment to the ordinance, to the ordinance that we have, assuming adopting tonight or whenever you take action on it.
Okay. And, I mean, that's kind of the way I heard of that one. The code cleanups, I guess, what I'm worried about is, you know, that's something that you, again, it's a new glitch board down the road, that you come back and, I would assume, in kind of a little chunk, two or three things, and we pass them, I don't know. But, so with a mechanism to deal with a specific case that hinges on the moment, on whether they can go forward, whether it would still be like a CD? You'd still be making exceptions, basically?
Well, conditional districts are for zoning amendments.
Right. Well, okay, project comes along, all these layers, once they're put together, it doesn't work because something we missed. What happens, what happens then?
A couple of things. We can package it together. We've not really formulated exact, what we didn't want to do was say, every three months, we're going to have something come into council, because what if we don't have something that comes up? So we didn't want to confine ourselves to say, we're going to do quarterly, or every three months, every four months, every six months. So if we see a pattern of, of things that need to be changed, we will package them together and bring them through the process. They have to come to the planning commission, and they would have to come to the city council.
So in a major, specific project, one comes up, we're going to say, you got to wait a couple, three months for us to get, to address this?
It could.
Or...
Or we could, we could see, what is another process? Before, city council has directed us to amend something out of the process, out of the, out of the code timeframe. So there's, there's many ways that we can bring it. We could talk, we could, we could schedule something ourselves and put it in there if it, if it was going to be an obstacle to...
Just a lot of times, times are, time is critical here.
Understand.
And also, I think with, you know, we're going to get more and more out-of-state folks. We already have, I'm sure y'all meeting new people every day, and, you know, they, I just don't want it to appear that we're putting up roadblocks, and I'm not talking about, I love a lot of the stuff about the code, what we've done. I'm just saying, we're going to have to be flexible as these unintended consequences, and we're going to be timely.
Absolutely.
Not, we'll get to that, you know, in three months, so...
Absolutely. And we're going to tabulate. My, my idea was to have a board in our, up front in our office, so the public can see that we're taking this seriously. They see the list that we have and how, and we want to look for themes, too. We want to make sure, let's package things together that make sense and they, how they fit together. We know that there's going to be some, some things that we're going to come across, or as a user, we're going to read it and say, well, this is not what we thought it said. We thought it meant this, but this is not what we thought of. We also know some developers or property owners, homeowners, that are going to come across with some, some things, and we want to certainly work with that. But code cleanups are going to, you know, it's going to be a couple of years, and then after that, you know, it may become more of amendment to the amendment process. So, I mean, you guys have been amending codes for many years, so as, as...
Yeah, this is going to be a, this isn't going to be a gradual process. Things, if we vote on tonight, it changes.
Right. It's a living document, and has to be, it has to breathe and continue moving forward.
What, outside, as I understand it, correct me, or help me, you know, outside the, what we're calling the nineteen forty-five, have we amended that at all? Because there was conversation about Sunset Park and Greenfield, different areas that people pointed out that were, that are very urban and, and more urban than some parts as we get closer to the edge of the forty-five.
Sure.
I mean, how, we, so we haven't updated that, we haven't drawn a new circle.
We have not updated that.
Even though we discussed that at some point.
It has been discussed, and the reason why at this point we haven't is the nineteen forty-five is a constant boundary. It's a boundary that we've used for years. There are some elements outside the forty-five that are urban in nature. As we go forward and do small area plans, though, we can see how, then we can work on standards to bring into our zoning code, how they can fit on those areas that maybe have some inside of the nineteen forty-five characteristics, but they're unique to that particular area. So that's why, when we started trying to think, how can we draw the line, this way or here, or what do we, what do we consider? We just felt like it was not specific enough and wouldn't cover every little situation. So we, so we wanted to use the boundary that we've been using for many years, and it is an established boundary. Is it perfect? No. But we do know that we need to come back at some point as we're doing the small area plans and try to, try to work on it from that perspective.
Well, I mean, it just, the area between, say, Seventeenth and Burnt Mill Creek, remind... Well, I mean, it just, the area between say seventeenth and Burnt Mill Creek remind, I mean, the difference there and, and, and the area over it, you know, some areas I've mentioned beyond Greenfield, Sunset, I just, they're not, I don't see them, but y'all do evidently. Um, so outside of this forty-five, what is, as I understand it, UMX, UMX is going away, correct?
Urban, urban mixed use outside the nineteen forty-five corporate limits becomes a legacy district.
Okay. So I recall during the, the comprehensive plan and we, we see it every two weeks, you know, these nodes and different areas to where we, to higher density. And I think one of our major goals in all of this is our land's running out and we've constantly have to talk about more density and more height. So outside of the forty-five, what is the, what development, what code, sorry, I mean, what, uh, what am I looking for here? What?
What standards would allow?
Where, how are we gonna promote density and verticality other than just multifamily?
We do have commercial district mixed use options. Urban mixed use.
The one that we, that you.
The one that had council adopted and, or modified and I believe it was October of the twenty.
How many of those have come to us since then?
We have not had any since then. We do have some, we have some interest, as an example, with some hotels being converted.
Well, I just think, my point is there, I mean, so in, in, in the new world, the area where the baby's hospital, whether you like it or not, would not be developed?
Sid Berry or the Grandview was a commercial district mixed use.
But, but, but under the new code?
I don't know if it would or not.
So what, UMX right now is outside of the forty-five, just?
You have Center Point.
Center Point.
You have the Avenue and you have the Galleria Site.
Okay. So there's nowhere else outside the forty-five where that kind of development is appropriate?
No, not, not under the, urban mixed use was really for the nineteen forty-five corporate limits. When we applied it outside the forty-five corporate limits, it created some additional issues, which is part of the reason why we've suggested making it a legacy. Those, those uses are approved. They have a, they have a conditional district. They can move forward with their plans.
We're, but we're no longer promoting, we, we changing gears there. No more mix, just bring us apartment.
No. Commercial district mixed use would require the mix. They could also develop.
Nobody's gonna use that one, Ron.
But they could also develop under RB or O and I or whatever the zoning district and not have to put in residential.
Okay. But the mix, okay, I'll move on. Um, last one for me, I think, and we'll probably defer here. I think last time you did, I, I just want to touch on this, the SA waters district or area.
And I'm, we'll probably need to call Mr. Gordon to the podium.
And that's fine. And I may not, it's not technical. Well, one que, one question is, the waters there now are, are what? And I don't know that, that business. SA means it's dirty, I guess, I would assume.
I'm gonna ask Mr. Gordon to.
Right.
Come up. Cause those are technical questions.
The next ones won't be after we get past this one.
Good evening. Um, yes, the SA classification generally, it's, it's a classification of waters. It's the highest classification short of the ORW classification for salt water.
What is ORW? Open water?
Outstanding resource water.
And, and so S, SA is like an A?
What's that?
Does it stand for something or does that mean like a grade A?
Well, I think it's, I'm not sure what the S stands for, but the A is like class A, class B, class C.
So, so right now those waters are what?
They are, well, they're classified SC Bradley Creek. I assume you're talking about Bradley Creek.
Well, that's the only district. Are we doing another area? That's the only area I was aware of.
That's the only area where the standards, the proposed standards are changing. Right. And the, the water quality, or the classification, stream classification is SC currently.
So I guess there's a B in between that, I would presume. No?
Yeah, there is. I think the ocean is, is SB, but I, I think most of the water, water bodies around here are either SA or SC.
So SB is the ocean?
I believe so.
We're gonna get cleaner than that. All right. Um, my, so, and Ron, I may run back into you. I'm just curious. So the areas that, that this surrounds, I was just looking at the, I don't have the map in front of me, but a lot, some UNCW, College Acres, Autumn Hall, kind of, is that, that's a big part of it, right?
Yeah, the, the proposed standard would apply, the higher standard would apply within one half mile and draining to Bradley Creek. And so anything outside of the half mile, the, what we call our program B standards, which is the lower standards would apply to those projects. It's only the projects that are within one half mile and draining to Bradley Creek.
So UNCW is, is the biggest of the headwaters from what I look, what I see.
Correct.
And they're exempt, correct?
That's questionable. There's some, some.
They believe they are.
Right.
As a, done by the state. Um, and then Autumn Hall is existing. So that, that's grandfathered, correct?
Any project that has an existing permit would be grandfathered.
So we're really talking about si, single family residence in College Acres? Pretty much. Okay. So it's really only gonna, the only thing that would really come in, it's gonna come into play is if, and I, I don't know if we'd, we'd even fit, but best example I could come up with, I don't know if it's half, I haven't measured where the head, where that water stops, but say off of Eastwood, you've got, there's a Scotchman or a gas station right there. It's been there forever that people go in and out of College Acres. Charlie can probably tell me the street name. But, um, but, but if you wanted, right behind there, if you bought a couple houses, wanted to upzone it, that, that's the kind of thing where, where it's gonna affect most likely. What, what effects do you, I, I'm trying to figure out what we're trying to do.
Well, I, I think.
How we're, how we're going to clean that water up to that level?
Well, this ordinance change won't clean the water up. It can't. It, it, it only applies to an increase in development. So the, the intent is to keep the water quality from getting worse. Because right now we're showing that the water quality monitoring data is between eight and thirty-five times what the water quality standards are for an SC stream, which is what Bradley Creek is. So we're trying to keep that from getting worse.
I understand. So is the, but so my example's kind of the only way of trying to pick up a place where it might actually possibly come to us, you know, where it's a transition area and somebody wants to upzone. That's, that's when this would apply. Probably. Okay.
Correct. It does apply to redevelopment, but only the net increase in impervious surface on that site.
And so your, your contention is that UNCW may, is affected by this?
I, I honestly don't know. It's more of a, a legal question. Cause there's.
Well, I just hope we, I've mentioned this prior and I don't, I never heard back from staff as to anyone getting with UNCW, cause you know, really don't want to run into them later. So, um, that'll do it for me. Thanks.
To, um. Go answer Kevin's question, I mean, with the parking. I know in, we've had, when, when you have parking issues and people have gone offsite, satellite parking for businesses, we had a certain distance between where the business was located. And if somebody wanted to do some kind of valet parking, but wanted to have it certain area, they found a parking lot, they, they've worked out a, a deal with the church or a, a business somewhere where they could allow for parking to take place. What were the standards that we had before in respect to the distance requirements between a satellite parking and a business?
Six hundred and fifty feet or two blocks.
Even for the satellite parking?
So, so we had a standard that says if you can't accommodate your minimum parking, there's a couple of things we have. If you can't accommodate, it's current code, not the proposed code, but current code would say if you cannot accommodate your minimum parking standards on your property, you can have a shared parking, a parking agreement with someone within six hundred and fifty feet or two blocks from your site. It has to be in a fee simple format or in a manner approved by our city attorney's office. We also have a use called non-residential parking in a residential zoning district that is currently allowed with a special use permit. And there's certain parameters and conditions that are associated with that. Those have both been removed from the proposed code, primarily because we had proposed to eliminate the minimum parking standard. So we didn't feel like if we eliminated minimum parking standard, we didn't need to have that satellite parking requirement to satisfy that standard.
So have I have a little restaurant, let's just say Omaysville Avenue, and we have them. And it's a very popular restaurant and the parking there on a Saturday and Sunday is packed. And I'm a business owner and I want to bring more business in and more people want to eat there. And if I find a parking lot, let's just say in neighboring church or business school, whatever, I could do that. It wouldn't be, there's no, there's no distance requirement.
I don't think.
If I went to valet today?
Current, the proposed code, I don't believe, I believe we took that out because of the, the minimum standard.
So that would, that would remain. And what we're talking about, that, we could do that?
It's not in the proposed code that I recall. Anyone remember? I don't, I believe we took it out of the proposed code because we did not, because we're proposing not having minimum parking standards.
What we're talking about.
But we do have a commercial parking lot standard that would allow someone to come through a commercial parking. You've issued special use permits for those before.
But you had a distance requirement?
Distance requirements.
So if we put Kevin's into this new code, we're talking about, can we do that or can we not do that? Or do we, do we have to have a distance requirement? Because we have a lot, we have a lot of, in these corridors, and to Kevin's point, yeah, we have popular little places that people like to, to go to and visit and are becoming very popular. I can think of, of a dozen. And they're close to neighborhoods. But as a business owner, there's surrounding businesses or parking lots that are not in use.
Right.
Certain days or in the evenings. And even if it's a little bit further than where I want to be, but if I'm willing to valet somebody or help somebody get there, I can do that.
Right. Under this proposal, the change that Mr. O, that we've presented as a, as a compromise, as, as, well, not compromise, but as a result of the conversation yesterday. And I have it on the slide here. So if you, there's no minimum requirements for that commercial use unless it's within six hundred and fifty feet, or it's within six hundred and fifty feet of a single dwelling residential district and has less than forty percent of the maximum. So let's say the maximum is thirty, you know, it's twenty-eight spaces and less than forty percent of that, then they need to, the owner or the, but the business owner will need to provide us a parking study. The parking study is then, or was already outlined in our code. And parking study is using the IT manual for parking generation is something that will be done by a professional engineer and they're looking at the size and the type of the use, the hours of operation, what are the, what are the opportunities for shared parking around it? What are the, the available on street and share, on street parking within six hundred feet of the property, et cetera? There's a list there on your screen. Then that information is considered by the technical review committee to determine whether or not, whether or not the applicant has, has provided adequate parking. And if not, and in the mindset of the TRC, that is not the case, then the next page here would say that the TRC, then that, that is not, the use is not permitted. Certainly that could be appealed to the board of adjustment as anything, any decision by the TRC or zoning administrator can be appealed to the board of adjustment. So it, it's, so in theory, yes, it would be allowed if they're within six hundred and fifty feet, but it's, it would be shown as part of that parking study. If they can't satisfy that, if they're not within that forty percent of the maximum.
My question's gonna be so easy, you're gonna thank me. With regard to a parking study, I, I get traffic impact analysis studies and all that, but parking study just, I mean, we know what we got. It's, 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 it's there. Parking, I mean, drive by and, and traffic, that's moving and it can change. But a parking study, if you're within six hundred and fifty feet of a single dwelling neighborhood and you're forty percent of what would, would have been required, I, I don't see why someone would be tasked with having to go out and hire a parking engineer to tell him what we should already know.
Well, certainly we know, we potentially might would know how many on-street parking spaces are available, but we don't know how many are necessarily used at all times. We, we may not know of, of all the uses within an area in which the owner could enter to some type of agreement with. So it's really providing that owner an opportunity to show, here's how we can satisfy the parking if we need to have, if, if that's the case.
Okay. That was, that just came up was as a result of what the mayor said.
Sure.
Everybody that, every time we talk about this, we always say that this is not perfect. And we know it's not perfect. If we adopt this tonight, we're still gonna be operating off of what? Because if, if we adopt it tonight, it's not gonna be effective until.
As, the proposed effective date is December first for this and then, and your next item as well. So until December first, the current code would be in play.
Okay. Good. So in the meantime, when projects go before the TRC or come before us, the planning, whatever, will we apply both during that interim period to see how it works? If, if anything rises to the top and we can go ahead and say, well, this is already something that's not right? Does that?
Yeah. Our, and Mr. Chambers is behind me, but he's already had his staff looking at both codes when they're reviewing plans or taking phone calls from potential investors. There's just, and you know, just to see what, how, how each code may would apply and what are some of the bugs. So we've already started that process on, on, as a project comes in, let's take, let's, let's look at from both perspectives, assuming that this code is adopted. And see, you know, so we can start identifying some of those bugs to fix.
And after the new LDC goes live, we will still be very sensitive?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And you made a comment earlier about we've been changing, doing amendments forever? I, I'd like to, only when they needed it?
Yes, yes, yes. We don't want to do them purposely, you're correct, or just unnecessarily. You're right.
Yeah, Ron, thank you guys for all the work you've done. Um, just a little more clarity on the glitch board. Cause I heard you say at one point, it may be six months before you get to it. Um, just give me a little more clarity on that, how that work?
Between, just for discussion purposes, so you take, you vote on it first and second rating tonight and effective date is December first. So between, and we may have already started as Mr. Ravenbuck had indicated, we'll start identifying what we're gonna call bugs or glitches. Things that maybe, some of them may be grammaticals. Some of them may be, okay, we misnumbered something.
Right.
Some of them may be, well, you know, now we're trying to apply it to this property. It, and it's, it's been, it's an obstacle to good, good design or good development. So we'll go ahead and start making those and what we, if, if there's some that we can bring through the process before December first to fix, we're gonna do that.
Okay.
Immediate, you know, somewhat immediately. So we're looking within two and a half months, basically. That will continue following the effective date. We know it's not a perfect code. We know we're still going to encounter issues and glitches and things that, you know, trends change, things change all the time. So we know we're gonna have to come back and try to fix some things later. What I didn't want to do was commit, say every three months, we're gonna be in front of city council with changes because we may not have anything come up in those three months.
Right.
But, you know, if we do and we have enough to bring them every three months, that's what we will do. Does that make sense?
Yeah. And it doesn't have to be three months. If it's something that.
Something that's important.
Right.
And we, we, we'll talk in our staff and say, you know, we really, this is really a major obstacle. It's something we think everybody wants to see. We can process it.
Right. And I think the key word is, like you said, it's a living document.
Yes.
That's key. Thank you.
Mr. Anderson?
Ron, these are, both these questions are for John. I noticed the reason I didn't ask him.
For who, I'm sorry?
The, our attorney.
Okay.
I, I noticed he'd wandered over here for some reason and that's why I didn't get him a minute ago, cause they, he was out of, out of place. Um, John, on the, I know we kind of got into a, I don't know, whatever you want to call it. We were trying to come up with compromises when the, the Kmart property was looking at being redeveloped with, with water, I mean, stormwater, right? And, and, and the, and the state, I guess the state law at the time trumped the, our, what we were trying to do. Is that fair to say?
There was an amendment to the state law, a couple of different amendments. The first amendment, I think, didn't quite do what the state was looking for. Now the, the law is, I think, quite clear and quite settled that as long as a developer doesn't increase the amount of impervious surface on a infill site, then they don't have to adhere to the higher standards that are in our modern current code. If they do increase it, then the amount that they increase has to comply with whatever our code says.
So that, that's good to learn something, but I, that, my real question, I was headed to my question of the, the waters and we're, you know, we're, again, we're getting involved with Kama and all that stuff. It's, it's a different why.
I'm, I'm sorry?
It's different that our code can be stronger than what they suggest because it's just allowed.
We're not dealing with redevelopments. We're dealing with just. We're not dealing with redevelopments, we're dealing with just development that's just beginning. If it's a redevelopment that has perv, or impervious square footage already, then the state law is going to trump, because it says that it trumps. If we are requiring a little bit stricter standards in our beginning development, not something that's already been developed, just raw land, then we can have a tighter requirement based on our local issues. And I will tell you, if we wanna get deeper than that, I'll have to call Sean Evans up. He, he's been researching that specifically with Rob Gordon, Gordon.
When I asked Rob, I was proposing a redevelopment, was rezoning and a redevelopment of upzone, and he said that's when it would apply, I thought, or that's what I thought I heard.
Well, the, the trick is, is there impervious surface already there, if so?
Three houses, three driveways, and now we're gonna put a triplex on it.
If, if they're not disturbing anymore, or not increasing the amount of impervious surface, then they're not gonna have to do anything under the state law, anything extra. If they are adding to that impervious surface, that's when our ability to regulate kicks in.
And do we, as we are, have drawn this, the mile or whatever it is, we didn't draw it, it's measured, but, and it takes in so much UNCW, as a state entity, are they exempt or not?
They're generally exempt. We, we do have some small regulatory ability, but when we get into buildings or anything, which that's where the majority of your impervious will come from, then they're immune to our regulation.
Thank you.
Ron, come on back up. Let's talk some more parking. First of all, tell me about the valet parking, because the mayor raised a good issue. To me, valet parking is, is, is a great thing, what popular restaurants do, because they only have small parking lots, so they're using somebody else's parking lot when it's not being used. So are we not allowing that any-
No, our code doesn't address valet parking. And valet parking is listed as a potential option in the current code to reduce minimum parking standards.
Okay. So if somebody's doing valet parking, they can still do it?
Yes.
Okay. Now, what if, and we'll just, what if? What if we, in the past sometime, approved some building, but with a condition that they had to have an off-site parking lot? Would that remain in place today?
That may be something our attorney needs to answer. Question was, if we, if there's been some approval that has-
Approval, but maybe there wasn't sufficient parking there, so we made it an exception, and they could, they had to have, as a condition of the rezoning, they had to have some off-site parking.
If it's a conditional district zoning, I would, and we're not changing too many of them, we'll get into the zoning changes at the next item.
Conditional district zoning i- is going to function essentially like a vested right. If they've already been approved, then they have the option of meeting those requirements, and they'll be immune to our new code until they totally redo everything. Now, in the situation-
The parking would still have to be there, because that was one of the conditions.
Yes, yes.
That's, well, I was asking-
Ron, I, I think I have a discussion with you in respect to the parking or the building being pushed to the front of the property line, and then allowing some row of parking. Is it, is that the policy that we're gonna use all over the city or in just specific areas? Because there's a concern about some of the lots that are smaller in size, like maybe an acre or maybe even less on a redevelopment component. How, how would that, could you kinda go over that real quick?
I'm gonna, let me, give me a second to flip to the street frontage requirements. I believe this is what you're getting to.
I think those are right there, Ron.
Right. These images are similar to the ones in our comprehensive plan, that were, again, adopted in 2016. And our comprehensive plan talks about building placement. When is it appropriate to pull the building to the street and put your parking to the side or the rear? When is it appropriate to, and that's what we call an urban frontage category? When is it appropriate to have your parking, still building, we want it closer to the street than maybe normal, but we would allow potentially up to two bays of parking, that's the center column that you see there, that's a semi-urban. And then it also identifies where suburban street frontage is appropriate. You know, have your parking filled with your building pushed back. And the particular ones that you're talking about, the urban frontage, which would require the building to pull, be pulled up, is, there's three streets, and only portions of those three streets in the city that have, that have been identified for the urban frontage. And, and back up for a second, that's outside of the central business district and the urban mixed use. The central business district, our downtown area, is gonna require the buildings pulled to the street. Urban mixed use, again, you have the buildings pulled to the street. So along with the more, the major corridors, we're looking at a portion of Carolina Beach Road, a portion of Market Street, and a portion of Seventeenth Street, in which our comprehensive plan is identified, we've looked at the growth factors analysis through our comprehensive plan, as well as its on-site, of where it makes sense to pull buildings to the street and put parking to the side and the rear. The image here on your screen, the top picture, that's the Forest Hills Veterinary Clinic. Think of that one, that's, that's roughly where along Market Street, we're talking about where, where we want parking, oh, excuse me, the building pulled to the street and parking side and rear. That was done without the frontage requirement. I think that was done through a conditional district rezoning, if I'm not mistaken, I could be mistaken there. But it works well, it blends in, it's got the, the hall, the, the building is where the homes are, the parking is more on the business side. It's very attractive and, and nice, and that's kinda what we're trying to accomplish. But it's not in every, along the entirety of College Road, it's not along the entirety of, of Market Street, it's, it's not. So it's only a portion of three lots, excuse me, of three streets. We've only identified eight total at this point, in which there would be some type of frontage requirement applied. So it's not a citywide thing.
Okay, alright. Yes, go ahead.
So Oleander's out, right?
Oleander is, Oleander does not have any urban frontage requirement, where we would require the building to be pulled to the street. Certainly, it's allowed, our code allows it, would allow it, but it's not a requirement.
Do like little grows of trees trump, or does the, where it is trump?
The veil of trees, yes, though we've talked about previously.
I mean, if you're wanting to pull it up, because it's, that's why, it's got-
We wanna pull it up, and we do have some, some flexibility in working with the trees and the building placement and so forth. But I just wanna just use this map as an example, just real quickly, this is Carolina Beach Road, and you've seen it before. But the red would indicate where we believe the urban frontage is, is appropriate. And you're basically running there from where Third, where Third and Carolina Beach Road start, down to roughly in front of Sunset Park. And then we have a semi-urban frontage, and then we have a suburban frontage. So again, it's not every length of every street in the city.
And then the other question, obviously, urban farming has become very popular, and, and, and obviously, some folks are, are capitalizing, being capitalists, and saying, I'm gonna be able to use my property, whether it's in the downtown area, wherever it may be, to be able to grow, grow things. And obviously, without a grocery store on the north side, I mean, this is a popular thing that we're starting to see all over downtown. And I'm just, my question is, why are we limiting it to, to, to that? And I don't know if Christine could talk about that?
I'm gonna let Christine's answer.
And I, and I understand the concern about being open, you, you grow something there, and then you're opening it up, and people are coming like a farmer's market, and it creates some, some issues in the community or in the neighborhood. But if I wanted to grow something in my backyard, let's just say I have a big backyard, and I wanted to grow something there, and then take it maybe somewhere downtown to the farmer's market or somewhere else to sell it, what would be, what, what, why would we wanna stop that?
You could actually use a residential property as an urban farm with the special use permit.
Why do I have to have a special use?
Because they have the potential impacts on the residential neighborhood. So while you may want to just grow a few herbs or flowers and take them to the farmer's market, your neighbor may decide that he's going to grow corn and bring in a John Deere tractor to harvest the corn, and a de-tasseling crew, and a big truck to haul it away, and then we're in a real pickle, pardon the pun. But, so there are potential impacts for, for the residential communities that we, we are trying to look out for.
So you're looking at the worst-case scenario, somebody coming in there with a John Deere and, and doing that?
Yes.
Which I don't think that would happen, but, and, and I've seen in other cities, like Atlanta allows it. I know that, I think Raleigh allows something with, but you can't sell on site.
There are options also included in the code, community gardens would be a use by right, or, I'm sorry, by prescribed conditions, so no special use permit required. In that case, there would be no sales permitted on that lot. And then what we call a kitchen garden, where perhaps you're just growing things to, to, you know, go outside and bring into your own kitchen, or perhaps share with your neighbor, those would be permitted as well.
Could we do something that maybe alleviates or eliminates the corn thing, so you don't have the concerns about the corn? And maybe, you know, people doing, I mean, because we've seen them all over town now, I mean, people growing them, and they're very popular, and it's the thing to do. And I'm just, I'm just wondering why we have to be so- Yeah, why, you know, I mean, I don't understand why we have to regulate it to that degree, especially when you wanna grow something.
Sure, we'd be glad to look at it further, if you wanted us to add it to our glitch board. I misspoke and called it a different word earlier, so be very careful. We'll be glad to take a look at that.
Could you?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you, Christine, I appreciate that. Thank you, guys.
Mr. Mayor, just as a clarification, under case law, unless we can get the flexibility we need out of a few specific objective conditions, if it takes more discretion than that, then it has to go to a quasi-judicial hearing, hence the special use permit.
Why do you have to complicate them things so much?
Lawyers are good at that, Mr. Mayor.
We've been doing that for four or five years now.
Okay. Yes, sir, Mr. Ravenbuck?
I don't, I don't-
Wait a minute, wait a minute, I'm sorry. I can't get him on here, Mr.-
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
We're having all this discussion about parking lots, and I was looking in the lighting standards, and I was interested to, have we, are we addressing the lighting standards of our streets and how dim or how bright they could be?
With this code, we are not addressing the, the streetlights along the street that are in the public right-of-way. We have, we have a street lighting policy that I believe there's a meeting next week or later this week to start looking into our streetlight policy. So this code is not addressing the street, the, the lights are in the right-of-way that, that go along the street.
Okay, alright.
This is more private property related, but, but the city, but it is, that is on the, the city is, is, is moving forward with looking at our street lighting policy.
Please keep me in the loop on that.
Sure.
Alright, thank you.
Can I bring up one other thing?
Please.
I'm remiss if I don't. It goes back to a question Mr. Anderson was asking about earlier, about commercial, the CDMUs and the urban mixed use and so forth. I want everyone to remember that CDMU stands for Commercial District Mixed Use. And when you amended that a few months ago, the intent was for it to be commercial first, or primarily commercial, because we were having an influx of apartments that were putting one or two percent, five percent of commercial to get through the regulation, and then we have an apartment complex along our, along our streets. So things like Center Point, even though it's the urban mixed use zoning, it could develop potentially under our Commercial District Mixed Use. It's heavily commercial, it's a lot of commercial residential, but, but not as much percentage-wise as, as some of the other projects we, we have for residential. So things like that Avenue, Center Point, could likely be built under an RB scenario or an ONI scenario, using the Commercial District Mixed Use. It's unlimited density if they put workforce housing in, by the way, it was in workforce housing. Unlimited density in those, in those districts, with workforce housing, I believe it said ten percent for up to fifteen years. So, so, I don't want, I was remiss, I should have mentioned that earlier, but I just wanted to come back and mention that.
Alright, any additional questions? Thank you, thank you, Ron.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Alright. There are no additional questions from council, I'll ask for the wishes of council. We have a motion to approve by Councilmember Barnett, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Haynes.
Can I just a point where we're approving what staff brought us with the change?
Okay.
And, and Councilmember Barnett, Mr. Mayor, the consistency statement which has the motion included actually takes into account the parking change that Councilmember O'Grady had requested, just for clarification.
Okay, ready. I move to approve the adoption of the new Land Development Code to include the amended language of eight dash three forty-one, as provided to the city council at this meeting, and find the new LDC to be consistent with the policies in the comprehensive plan, based on the materials and the information provided at the public hearing and in the staff report. And to find approval of the new LDC is reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons. The new Land Development Code implements applicable state statutes and case law, as well as many policies and recommendations of the city's creative Wilmington Comprehensive Plan, including but not limited to street frontage standards, tree preservation, improved stormwater regulations, residential compatibility standards, and graceful density.
Okay. We're ready to vote. All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item passes unanimously. Is there a motion to waive second reading? Motion made by Mayor Pro Tem Haynes, seconded by Councilmember O'Grady. Discussion, all in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed, that item passes unanimously on first as well as second reading. Okay, that brings us to our next item of business, which is item oh seven, which is an order to submitting the official zoning map of the city to adjust zoning lines to the center lines of streets to correct, went down on me, buddy. Center lines of streets to correct mapping errors and minor edits to revert past conditional district and related rezoning actions to remove certain overlay districts, to remove split zoning of certain lots, parcels, or any portion thereof, and to rezone existing AI to LI MSMU and RFMU to UMX. This time I'd like to recognize our inter-manager, Mr. Cottle, Mr. Cottle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Satterfield will overview this item as well.
Okay, this is a companion item, of course, with the, with the adoption of the Land Development Code. There are some changes that we need to make. You may recall a presentation that Ms. Hughes made at the Community College on June twenty-fourth regarding some zoning changes. And I just wanna provide a real quick overview. I do have slides, should there be specific questions on any of the areas, but this is the slide that I really proposed to use tonight. The map changes that you have before you, and you should have a handout now with a nice little legend that has eleven by seventeen map with the changes, or with the zoning map, excuse me. But we're looking at having some minor edits. We're moving zoning lines to our street center lines. There were some split zone boundaries at Autumn Hall that we're cleaning up. There are some conditional districts that were set for a few years and nothing was done. So we're bringing them to either revert back to their previous zoning or change to a more appropriate zoning. We are eliminating the airport industrial zoning classification and proposing to rezone those properties to light industrial. The Main Street Mixed Use zoning along Castle Street with Main Street Mixed Use is being eliminated, so we're proposing to rezone those properties to urban mixed use. And then our overlay districts, floodplain overlay, Wrightsville Avenue corridor overlay, our special highway overlay district, there's a South Seventeenth Street overlay, Dawson Wooster corridor overlay, maybe forgetting one. It does not impact the historic district overlay, though, I wanna clarify that. We're eliminating them, but we do have standards in the code. The frontage standards as an example for Eastwood Road, a military cutoff, for Eastwood Road as example would apply for the, the special highway overlay district. The Waco, the Wrightsville Avenue corridor overlay, we're eliminating that, but we have frontage standards for Wrightsville Avenue. The floodplain overlay, eliminating that, but we still have floodplain standards. So they're covered in another way, is my point. So I can go over in more detail, we did talk about them on our June twenty-fourth meeting. That's it, planning staff and our planning commission recommend approval, and they do find it reasonable and consistent.
Okay. We have a question, Mr. Ravenbuck?
Yes, sir. Ron, the, the zoning lines to the street center lines?
Yes, sir.
Historically, or, I think, not too many people zone their streets, I'm told. And if you've got a, an office on the corner of a collector's street and a residential street, they weren't allowed to use that residential street, is that something that's gonna be jockeyed about? that's going to be jockeyed about? Half of that street will be where they can come out of that and get to the collector?
Half of the lines will move to the center line, but we, I believe we have in our, um, parking standards, driveway standards, if a driveway was, is, driveway will be allowed unless it is coming out across from a, a house across the street, otherwise, then we would, we wouldn't want it moved.
Okay.
So, is that, is that answer your question?
Yeah, kind of, but in, in the past, the whole, the whole street was zoned residential.
Correct.
Now, to the center line is zoned say O-N-I, the other half is residential.
That's correct.
Thank you, so, one, no.
That'll avoid, you know, sometimes, I don't know, it's not often, but sometimes you, we have a rezoning for you just to rezone the street.
Yeah.
Mr. Grady?
Well, I like everything here except that change, the center line change.
Sure.
Because right now, we got two pieces of property and they're both residential, that street's a residential street. Now, this guy over here comes and rezones and asks that it be some commercial use. If he doesn't also ask for the street to be rezoned, he can't have trucks come in and out of here, he can't make deliveries, he can't use the street because it's a residential street, right?
Well.
On our current code.
In the current code you're talking about, yeah, there's, there's a few things going there. One is there's a schedule of, I don't know, they're not going to get the proper term right, but it's not, because it's not part of our code, but a schedule of streets in which trucks are prohibited. Um, that's one thing, is another part of our code, not the land development code, but other parts of city code. The other thing is, you can still have a residentially zoned street, the street itself may not be residential, but, but it's still, if it's zoned residential and that's the only way that they can get into their site, then we have to allow a driveway.
If it's the only way?
If it is, if it's the frontage, so if it's a street.
Yeah, I'm thinking it's the back.
I'm sorry.
I'm, my, in my supposition, it's the back, they're on a main street, this is the back.
Right.
But, what they, they want it to be a, a rezoned, and usually, when people come in, they ask for the street to be rezoned, because they want to have trucks going in and out, and they don't want to have a question about that.
Right.
Um, so what happens is, what was a residential street now is half not residential, which means it's not residential at all, because the people on the other side have to put up with the truck traffic, and now it's allowed, because that street's been rezoned. It's now not a residential street. I got a problem with that, and I don't see why it's automatic. I think we should continue to do it the way we do now, which is, you rezone the property, if you need the street, you have to ask for it, so that we can at least consider it. And when I asked this at the, at our sessions, what I was told was, well, all the cities, and nobody requires you to rezone the streets. And I don't think that's a good enough reason.
There are a lot of, in our research, few cities do zone streets, and those that do typically bring it to the center line. Um, jurisdiction I was working at before, that's what they did, they brought it to the center line, as a piece of property is rezoned, it automatically was zoned to the center line.
I just think the fact that they would have to come in and ask for the street to be rezoned is in, make sure it's reviewed, and it's reviewed by the decision-makers here, that we have to decide whether that street should be rezoned or not. If we do it automatically, we don't even get to consider it.
Ron, Mark?
Just a hypothetical, and, and I can, I can take you twenty of them that I know off the top of my head, on a collector's street such as Wrightsville Avenue, and you've got a street going off of it that's generally single-dwelling neighborhood, but that corner piece is zoned O-N-I, there's an office on it, they have a driveway, but they can't come out of that driveway and turn left on, I'll sit on my hands.
You try.
They can't turn left, and, because you can't generate traffic from a commercial use into a residential use, is that still law?
In the driveway, you're talking about Wrightsville Ave, just your, your example, a driveway on the side street.
They can come out of that driveway and go to Wrightsville Avenue, because that little section of.
The, the truck, you're referencing a truck, yes.
Let's say a truck, or, or traffic coming off of that office park, it's, they're on that portion of the road to the center line that is zoned, the same thing as their, as their lot is, it's O-N-I.
Right, but I'm just thinking, like, if someone lives in the back, and they want to, and they're pulling out that office, and then to get home, they would be able to go that street to get to their home.
That kind of traffic, yeah, but I'm talking about if it was commercial traffic, like trucks and stuff like that, they can't go through that neighborhood.
Right, my understanding is there is a, um, a list of streets in which trucks are prohibited from, and I just apologize, I don't have that list with me, it's gay thick.
Got you, okay.
Mr. Anderson?
Clear as mud. Um, the, uh, the same subject, you, someone off, off, you know, opens a, I don't know, hairdresser, you know, all, insurance office on the corner of one of these collector's streets, and then you, you pull into a residential street. First of all, if we've rezoned that, I would think we're taking all this into account anyway.
Correct.
So, I mean, it's not, I mean, so, if the zoning is that already, in this case, I mean, that, it already, it already exists, right? That's what we're talking about, doing stuff that it currently exists, not future.
Right, well, what we're doing is, is this example we have on the screen here, um, you see the yellow in the, in the area, that's part of the street, in that particular instance, it's CB, that's a bad example because it's not talking about the residential you're looking at, but in this case, that CB would go to the center line of the street. There are instances where we have residential across the street, but you're right, somebody would have come in and tried to rezone their property, you're taking that into, you're taking that consideration anyway.
But, I mean, but to the center line, it seems like it, for that little stub that comes in off the, off the collector, you got to be able to get in and out, so, I mean, it's not just going to be half, right?
Right. Cars will still be able to use, that example right there, cars can still come in and out of that, on that residentially zoned street, in the current situation.
So the half, the other half, even if it's other color, doesn't matter if you've got it.
Right, but it, what that does, it prevents the property on the other, on the north side of that, of the example, from having a driveway in that residential area, on that's a residentially zoned street.
So it's, has to do with the curb cut?
Correct.
It has to do with the driveway?
Correct. Trucks, there are certain streets.
I, I'm very familiar with that, in my business, okay.
And actually, there's a link here that takes us to that, but that's, it's a, I won't, I won't bore us with that, but, but it really is limiting the driveway cuts.
Yeah, I thought that's what I was trying, the point I was trying to make, is that they would, once you rezone to the center line, they can now have driveway cuts into that street.
They could, except.
And so that commercial traffic now comes out onto that street, and for all those residents on the other side of the street, that's not a residential street anymore, that's now where all the truck traffic comes out. That's my point, that shouldn't be automatic, that should have to come to this, this council for us to make the decision whether that road gets rezoned or not.
And, we do have a stipulation in our parking standards, um, if you have a corner lot, as an example, the, the side lot, if there's a house across the street, the, the side lot would, the driveway would not be allowed because there's a house across the street. There's nothing to prevent someone pulling off on the major street, though, and then turning down that road, even a truck, unless, you know, if they may be operating in violation of the, um, official traffic schedule.
Okay, sorry, any other questions? Alright, alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions from council? Okay, what are the wishes of council in respect to the item? We have a motion to approve by Councilmember Robyn Mark, seconded by Councilmember Anderson. Mr. Robyn Mark?
And here that we need to, that we've discussed here, is this, is this clean?
Yeah.
We didn't have anything added to this?
There was nothing that needed to be added to that, the consistency statement is required, though.
I got it.
Mr. Mayor, I, I'd like to make an alternative motion, uh, that we pass the item, except for, uh, moving zoning lines to the street center line.
So you have a substitute motion, you're making a substitute motion?
Yes.
Okay, okay, do we have a second to that motion?
I don't know.
I just need a little clarity on that. I, I, I'm, I'm still, I hate to say it, I'm kind of still confused.
My alternative is that instead of it, uh, instead of an adjoining street automatically being rezoned when the property is rezoned, that the, one requesting the rezoning has to ask for that street to be rezoned, so that we have to make a decision on that as well.
Isn't that already done? I mean, we don't, we don't do that now at all.
That's the way it is done now, people have to ask for the street to be rezoned. This says, once you rezon the property, the street's automatically rezoned.
So which comes first? Which comes first?
Well, it becomes a lot easier, you don't have to argue about the street, you get the property rezoned, and you get the street.
No, but I'm talking about.
Whereas now, you have to ask for the street, so we have to consider it.
Okay, your way, the guy comes in and gets his, he or she comes and gets their property rezoned, do we have to go through a rezoning process on the street? Is that what you're?
Oh, it becomes automatic.
Yeah.
What I'm saying is, that should be a half, something you have to ask for, so that this body has to consider, what's the impact of changing that street?
More concerned, though, really, about not some.
I've made a motion, and I, I, I don't, do I have a second? If I have a second?
Excuse me, everybody, Mr., let me, let me go back, Mr. O'Grady has put a motion on the floor, do we have a second to that motion?
I'll second for discussion.
Okay, we have a second to that motion for discussion, okay? Mr. Anderson, did you want to continue with your?
Kevin, more concerned about things that are getting amended with this vote, with the vote we just made, is that correct?
The last.
The things that are going to change under the LDC, not future stuff that we're, it's going to come in here, correct?
Correct, it's, it's just a few, this is the, you know, next week when somebody comes in and wants to ask for a rezoning, he doesn't have to ask for the street, that's now going to be assumed, that they get that, it's automatic. I think we, or, it won't be me, because I won't be here.
But, but don't they go hand in hand?
I, I, no, I think in the past, we haven't, we've only had to consider the streets when it has been asked for. If they didn't ask for it, the street did not get rezoned.
Okay, well, I'm just, I'm, I'm trying to think of examples, somebody comes in to rezon it to O-N-I, and we give them O-N-I, I would think that, I mean, the conversation's going to come up about the street, correct?
No, it doesn't, some, O-NIs come in and they don't necessarily ask for it. Usually, when they're asking for the street to be rezoned, it's because they want to use it, they want a driveway cut.
Right.
So they're asking for it. This says, you get it no matter what, it's automatic, and therefore, it won't be a matter of our discussion. It should be a matter of our discussion, especially if it is residential on the other side of the street.
Don't they just get a portion of it? They'll get the entire street, right? Up to the center line?
I don't know, do they get the whole street, or just the portion that puts them?
Ron, could you come back up here, because, you know, you, you made comment about parking requirements can trump some of this stuff, so, explain that again, please.
If, if the ordinance is passed as presented, current situation, the zoning map would move, would make, would move the zoning to the center line of the streets, as, as, if it's passed as presented. There's a couple of things going on, that's one I wanted to clarify. When a piece of property is rezoned current, on their current standards that we're operating under, if the street is zoned residential, and that is the only way into the piece of property, there can still be a driveway, commercial driveway into that, into that property. And that's, I'm talking about under current code, current code before you, when you adopted it tonight, so the code we've been operating on it for many years. If that is the only access into the property, and the street is zoned residential, they can still have a commercial driveway, we can't deny access. So it really impacts where there's a corner lots, but the proposal is to rezone, to move this, to the line to the center line of the street. As you rezone properties moving forward, the proposal would be to, the, the street, the zoning of that property goes to the center line of the street, so in effect, you are taking that in consideration when you make a recommendation, or, excuse me, when you make a decision on a, on a zoning case, which I think was what your point was, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, so it, it, it's combined in the total package, so.
Yeah, yeah.
We're, we're not, you're not rezoning the property, then having to come back and rezone the street.
Correct.
So we're not doing two rezonings, we're doing one, so you base it on the totality of whether the development is right for the area or not.
Right, right, and, and if it's multiple frontages, it would, the, all the frontages, so if it's two, you know, a corner lot, or, or a through lot with three frontages, all three frontages to the center line would be zoned to that, that non-residential zoning, or residential, whatever the case may be.
It, it seems to me that we have, in the past, gone back and had to correct, or whatever, if it was O-N-I and it was residential, then we had to go back and make half the street O-N-I.
Right.
I don't remember a time that we didn't do that. This was a, a big matter of discussion in the Soda Pop District, remember that, when they were going to put a grocery store, and they were going to have all these trucks, and, all day and all night, in a loading zone, right at a residential area?
Across the street of a residential, yes.
Yeah, so, that, that is problematic, I mean, I guess you just deal with that when you're rezoning the property, the, the major property itself.
Correct.
I, I guess, and I don't want to speak for Kevin, but part of it is, that may get lost in the discussion about the rezoning, whereas now, our sort of doing it piecemeal, it's, it's fully vetted.
Right, and, and that particular situation, I remember it pretty well, I mean, you're looking, I think it was Tenth Street behind it.
Yeah, something.
Um, that, that's, you know, sixty-foot right-of-way, there happens to be residential homes across the street, but the street in itself is a collector's street, it's, um, a one-way street that, you know, connects down, you know, so it's not necessarily a residential street, there's a mixed-use street, if you will, there's residential and commercial and industrials all up and down the street.
But that was another one that we turned down, because he did not come under conditional district rezoning.
Correct.
He came down under general rezoning, and he could not give us specifics, and there was an area to the side where the Pepsi-Cola or Coca-Cola drivers would use to take their trucks into, and there was another area, but he couldn't give us any definitive plans as to how that would lay out, that's why that thing died.
Right.
And we voted against that, because of our concerns, because he couldn't share with us any kind of specifics.
Right.
It was more general, it was vague.
But in that case, I think the, and I'm just for this, for disclosure, I believe the property itself was zoned urban mixed-use, and where he wanted to put his loading dock or that was zoned residential, and that's why he was coming through the resident, through the, through the, uh, rezoning process.
Seems like the, another thing that was recent was Park Avenue between Park Place, but, um, what would that be, between Floral and?
Yeah, I vaguely remember that one.
Indian Independence Boulevard.
No.
We've had a couple of urban mixed use.
Behind Hanover Center, they were going to build something, and we, we, didn't we rezone that street?
I believe so.
And there, and, but it was residential, so, what it, what it, I, I, I'm somewhat sympathetic to what Kevin's talking about, I think we just have to make sure going forward that this is.
It's disclosed.
That we're aware that, that that is going to be part of the process.
Sure, and staff will do its best to, to make sure that's included in a.
Because basically, I think we, we've looked, as, as the mayor says, at the total package that, that someone's requesting, and then if we've had to go back, we've always, as far as I remember, rezone the street to coordinate with the lot, or the use.
Mr. Anderson?
So, Ron, on your, on your maps, you know, you give, in your case studies that you give us, and you have the two squares, and has the zoning, and it has the, the Google shot, or whatever, and, on the one you would be bringing to us, it would, it would lay out, colored or code, we're rezoning to the center line, all the way, the whole, that, that becomes part of the lot, correct?
Well, it's not part of the lot, but it'll be part of the zoning boundary.
It's the zoning map lot, yes, sir.
Yes, okay. Mr. Barnett?
What would be the, I guess, disadvantage of adding this to this piece? What would be the disadvantage?
Disadvantage of?
Accepting this motion, I mean, from the planning perspective.
Trying to just make sure I can formulate what I want to say. Some of it would be requiring someone to come through the process to rezone just the street, to have access to their property. Um, that would probably be the biggest disadvantage I can think of, um, staff might want to provide some others. Just trying to.
Our GIS planner has advised me that cartographically, it makes for a neater map, um, it's easier for citizens to understand and process when they see the map in this context, um, and when we initiated this process, um, Don Bennett was still here, and he was a big fan of allowing the traffic control schedule to dictate the use of streets, rather than trying to do that through zoning, because it makes a little bit of a mess sometimes, um, for some property owners, so, um, this was rooted in conversations that we had with Mr. Bennett, um, and with our, our GIS planner on how to best execute these things.
I could add something, Ron?
Sure.
Okay, I don't get that.
Going back to the origins of zoning, the ideal situation is to have a zoning
the ideal situation is to have a zoning line go on the back lot line. Zoning lines are best if they're mid-block. They go behind properties that butt up against each other on the back. That's the best place, place for a zoning line. The next best thing to do is to try to have the same type of use on opposite sides of the same street. So commercial should always front commercial, residential should always front residential. Those are the two primary overriding rules of good zoning practice. However, you do find situations in Wilmington and in every city across the country where you have mix of uses. I think somebody mentioned here recently, maybe it was Mr. Riven Park mentioned Wrightsville Avenue, where you have a mix of, of residential and commercial uses kind of spaced along the road historically. Because of that situation, it is no longer a residential street. It is best described as a mixed-use street. If, if you can say that at all. And we also have parts of our city where we had, years ago, we had mom and pop grocery stores. We had corner stores. We had different situations where you wouldn't necessarily say the whole street's residential and then not allow somebody to get to a corner grocery store or, or a mom and pop store. So zoning to the center line of the street is a good practice. But most of the time when we review site plans in our TRC, we're very aware of where driveways are going and what's, what's best. We, we debated this, for example, recently with the proposed coffee shop at the corner of Worcester and Third. A lot of traffic there, a lot of, of issues about where to put driveways. So this is not something that staff takes lightly, that we do look at, at the placement of driveways for commercial developments very carefully as part of our TRC process, if nothing else. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you for listening for a second.
Any other things? All right, let's, um, let's go, let's, um, Mr. O'Grady has a motion on the floor, second by Mayor Protem Haynes. All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It fails five to two. Now we'll go back to Mr., uh, Mr. Riven Park and Mr. Anderson's motion. Mr. Riven Park, are you going to read the consistent statement?
Ready?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I moved to approve the amendment to the city's official zoning map and find it to be consistent with the policies and the comprehensive plan based on the materials and the information provided at the public hearing and in the staff report. And to find approval of the new map is reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons. The proposed map amendments make the map consistent with policies related to mixed-use development, bicycle and pedestrian connectivity, historic preservation and land use and transportation. The map amendments are an integral part of the functionality of the new land development code.
All right, ready to vote? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye. Okay, that item passes unanimously. Is there a motion to waive second reading? Motion made by Councilmember Riven Park, second by Mayor Protem Haynes, discussion. All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item passes unanimously on first as well as second reading. That brings us to our next item of business, which is item O eight A, which is a resolution officially accepting public streets and storm drainage facilities within the Casa Court right-of-way and item O eight B, which is an ordinance establishing a speed limit of 25 miles per hour on Casa Court. At this time, I'd like to recognize Mr. Cottle for our staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Rob Gordon, our plan review engineer will overview item eight A.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. Before you have a resolution authorizing official acceptance of the street and drainage improvements within the Casa Court right-of-way and associated easements, this street is associated with a home place development off of Beasley Road as shown in exhibit A. I believe that the companion item is also just a, a speed limit ordinance establishing the speed limit at 25 miles per hour. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any question, Mr. Gordon? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Any further questions in council? Hearing none. What are the wishes of council in respect to the item, item O eight A? We have a motion to approve by Councilmember Barnett, second by Councilmember Riven Park, discussion. All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That item passes unanimously. Now let's go to item O eight B, which is the ordinance establishing a speed limit of 25 miles per hour on Casa Court. What are the wishes of council in respect to the ordinance? Motion made by Councilmember Anderson, second by Councilmember Spears, discussion. All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Item passes unanimously on first reading. Is there a motion to waive second reading? Motion made by Councilmember Spears, second by Councilmember Riven Park, discussion. All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That item passes unanimously on first as well as second reading. That brings us to our next item of business, which is item O nine A, which is an ordinance appropriating $139,600 to the Parks and Landscape Contract Services line to complete the year 2021 authorized urban forestry management plan. And then item O nine B, which is the resolution authorizing a professional services agreement with Davy Resource Group Incorporated for the development of a comprehensive urban forestry master plan. At this time, I'd like to recognize our interim city management, Mr. Cottle. Mr. Cottle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, Ms. Beatty will overview this for, these two items for us.
Good evening again, Mayor, Mayor Protem and council. This is an ordinance asking council to appropriate $139,600 to pay for an urban forestry management plan and an accompanying resolution awarding the plan to Davy Resource Group. $100,000 was adopted with the city's fiscal '21 budget to pay for an urban forestry management plan. Due to key staff turnover last year, the development of the requests for proposals was delayed for advertisement. The bid opening was June 8th. Parks landscaping and forestry staff could not get the contract recommendation for award before the end of the fiscal year. So similar to the previous item that I, I brought forward to you tonight, those funds reverted back to, in this case, the city's general fund. Staff is requesting the $100,000 that reverted back to the general fund be re-appropriated along with an additional $39,600 in order to get the full plan scope presented to city council and the community services fiscal year '21 budget submittal. If council does adopt the appropriation, staff recommends award of a contract to Davy Resource Group out of Kent, Ohio with offices in Raleigh. Davy is considered a leader in the industry. They met and exceeded the criteria in their request for proposal, which included qualifications and experience, core services, relevant projects and project understanding and approach. If awarded, the contract deliverables include a tree inventory for the city's 1945 corporate limits, public education outreach and, and engagement in the plan, which will include operations of the city's, a review of the city's tree section operations, assessment of codes, policies and programs, evaluation of the city's use of technology with regard to trees and our canopy and how to advance those and identify areas of the city in need of greater canopy. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any question for Ms. Beatty? Thank you, Ms., thank you, Ms. Beatty. Okay, what are the, what are the wishes of council in respect to the ordinance?
I moved to approve it. I thought I did.
Okay, Councilmember O'Grady, did you make the motion?
Yes, I did.
And Mayor Protem, second it, discussion. All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That item passes unanimously on first reading. Is there a motion to waive second reading? Motion made by Councilmember Riven Park, second by Councilmember Barnett, discussion. All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That item passes unanimously on first as well as second reading. Now let's go to the resolution, which is O nine B, resolution authorizing a professional services agreement with Davy Resourcing Group Incorporated for the development of a comprehensive urban forestry master plan. What are the wishes of council in respect to the resolution? We have a motion made by Councilmember Barnett, second by Councilmember O'Grady, discussion. All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item passes unanimously with only one reading. If it would allow, if the council would allow me, um, I'd like to take item R two, which is a resolution to support the efforts to achieve greater healthcare provider workforce diversity in the city of Wilmington. And I'd like to move that in front. I do have Dr. Philip Brown here with New Hanover Regional Medical Center. We do have an uptick in COVID cases and I know you've got to get back to the hospital and do your job. And so I ask if, if the council would allow him to come forward because we need to get him back. So at this time, I would read the resolution, which is resolution in support of efforts to achieve greater healthcare provider workforce diversity in the city of Wilmington. I'd like to recognize, um, Mr. Dr. Philip Brown. Dr. Brown?
Thank you, Mayor, uh, Mayor Protem and members of the council. Since you used the C-word, I would be remiss if I didn't give you a very fast update about the current state of COVID in Wilmington and New Hanover County. So actually, for the last two days, we've had our highest number of patients since the pandemic began. The rate of increase of cases in our area is three times as fast as it's ever been. And the average age of patients is in the mid-40s as opposed to the mid-60s, which is what we saw in the earlier level of the pandemic. So we need help. Uh, we need help in terms of vaccinations and we need help in terms of folks wearing masks anytime that you can't distance. It's really the only way we're going to get back ahead of this. There is no end in sight to the current rise of cases. Usually we'll be able to predict that plateau. Right now, we're not able to predict any plateau effect. So a brief, although not very good, update, but I did want to get it out there so all would be aware of just this dire situation that we're in with regard to COVID and that is mostly the Delta variant. And it is 88% unvaccinated patients. So there is some breakthrough. That said, thank you for considering this resolution. You have the language in front of you. This is what we believe is best practice in healthcare. The references are listed in the whereas language of the resolution. The idea is that our healthcare workforce will be more successful in delivering remarkable care if they resemble the patients they take care of. So we have many recruitment efforts that, that will be enhanced by supporting language from the city of Wilmington in terms of supporting this as a framework for helping shape the workforce of the future. So thank you for considering. I'll take any questions.
Just, Mr. Dr.? Yeah, I'm sorry. Again, I'm, the variant, um, what ages are you seeing being hospitalized?
All ages. We have everything from pediatric patients all the way up to, to octogenarians, patients in their 80s and 90s. But we have a tremendous increase in the number of younger patients, many 30 and 40-year-olds. A smaller number of 20 and teens and a smaller number of children. But this is a disease of all ages now, very much so. One thing that we have in our favor currently, and I really, I mean, there's some science behind this, right? So the, the older population in our area is vaccinated at over 80% rate. We're not seeing them hospitalized nearly as much. The big difference is before, we weren't seeing the younger patients hospitalized, even though we knew they were getting COVID. Now, because of the severity of illness with the Delta variant, they are being hospitalized. So it's a more severe sickness at this point. That's very frightening.
Is it, is it a major concern that kids will be going back to school next week?
Well, I think we have to-
How are you prepared for that?
We have to keep an incredibly close eye on that. We know that the vaccination rate in school-aged children only applies to 12 and above because that's, that's who's under emergency use authorization. They're still at some risk. Um, the younger kids, masking is really important. And, and hopefully, uh, I believe that school board intends to be very proactive in looking at these cases. And I would not be surprised at all to see many closures based on case exposures. We've already seen it in other areas.
Last question. Outside stuff, like giving away book bags, parties or anything outside, safe, not safe, good idea to wait?
Outside is much safer. Spacing is still important, is how I would say it. If you can't, if you can't achieve that good spacing, then really need to be in masks. But outside is certainly still safer than inside. And remember that, that exposure, you know, that exposure is not walking past somebody who has COVID, right? It actually is a 15-minute exposure in proximity to somebody. So it's important to understand that it's not just like when you pass somebody on the street, you do actually have to have some time and, and contact, which also helps explain why the classroom environment could be potentially hazardous because of the amount of time. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Brown, what about objects? And also the fact that we're, we're approaching fall and this weather is going to change. So should we be even more concerned?
I missed the first word. I couldn't hear.
You talk about outside being safer and having that 15-minute interaction. But, you know, what about the concern of objects, you know, shopping, buggies and things of that nature?
Yeah, hand hygiene is still, is still important. You know, what we know now that we didn't know at the beginning of the pandemic is that the surface transmission is not as great as we initially feared. It's still mostly air exchange, but certainly if, you know, if you've got a person who's been coughing on their hand and has touched something and you touch it, then that's transmission waiting to happen right there. So hand hygiene is really, really important.
Saying right now that the number that we're seeing at the hospital is the highest number since this whole COVID began?
Yes, absolutely.
Even in early March of, of 2020?
Our highest numbers for the last two days.
And, and by and large, these people that you're seeing are people that are, are not vaccinated?
88%.
Good. And not good. I didn't mean it that way.
Understood.
Good that you're vaccinated.
All right, thank you, Dr. Brown. Appreciate it. Give back, give back to your job. Thank you very much, sir. So we'll take a, we have a motion to approve by Councilmember Anderson, second by Councilmember Spears, discussion. All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item passes unanimously. That brings us to our next item of business. We'll go back to item O ten, which is the ord, or, uh, ordinance prohibiting discrimination in public accommodations within the city of Wilmington. I will note that the council has received a substitute ordinance that I have brought forward. I will like to read that ordinance, or that resolution that I have brought forward. First of all, let me just say that in discussions with Equality and C, this discussion about anti-discriminatory ordinance has been ongoing since November of 2020 in preparation for what was going to happen when the HB two thing had expired. And we were working with the Metro Mayor's from around the state of North Carolina, of the larger municipalities to determine how we were going to move forward and work together. We had very good discussions with Equality and C. I think we were all in unison that we would pass some ordinance in respect to discriminatory practices, especially in respect to sex. That is not covered by the federal law. Uh, we have looked at different cities doing different things. There's some cities that have been much more aggressive about it based on what their attorneys have recommended to them. John, our attorney, John Joy, our attorney, has made some recommendations to us as to what they feel we can do and what we can't do. I want to have an ongoing discussion with this community. It's not, we're one and done and this is over with. I think it's very important that we hear from the community and we hear from everybody and, and hear what the concerns are. Also investigate some of the situations that have been brought forward in respect to some discriminatory practices that have been brought forward. We are, I believe, a welcoming city. I believe that we are a vibrant city and I think that we need to show that we are against discrimination of any sort. So I would like to turn it over to John first. But let me, let me read the, the, the resolution that I prepared for, for, for the council and for everybody here. And it says that whereas the city of Wilmington is opposed to harassment and discrimination on the basis of race, color, religion, sex, including sexual orientation, gender identity and pregnancy, national origin, age, disability or genetic disorder and has effectuated anti-discrimination policies in order to achieve a better work environment within the city. And whereas city policy 213 harassment and discrimination prohibits all forms of harassment and discrimination in city employment, specifically including any harassment or discrimination by or against any employees of the city. And whereas city policy 109, local small and minority business purchasing program and additional policies and procedures contained in the city's procurement manual all further affirm the city's desire to ensure to the degree possible that all businesses are afforded an equal opportunity to participate in providing goods and services to the city. And whereas it is also the policy and intent of the city not to enter into a contract with a business which the city is aware has knowingly discriminated in the solicitation, selection, hiring or treatment of vendors, suppliers, subcontractors- or treatment of vendors, suppliers, subcontractors, or commercial customers on the basis of race, color, religion, sex, including sexual orientation, gender identity, and pregnancy, national origin, age, disability, or genetic disorder. And whereas the city desires to reaffirm that consistent with the city's anti-discrimination stance and current policies and procedures used during the procurement process, the city will also not discriminate on the basis of race, color, religion, sex, including sexual orientation, gender identity, and pregnancy, national origin, age, disability, or genetic disorder in the awarding of any contracts by the city. Therefore, be resolved that the mayor is authorized to, in his discretion, within 45 days, to request an appropriate group of city staff and community members to review and determine the presence of status of discrimination that is contrary to this resolution in our city, and determine what is needed to remedy and reduce any such discrimination, and to report such findings with specific factual support and evidence to the city council honor before July 1st, 2022. That the city manager is directed to continue to establish, enforce, update, and amend such policies as well ensure that there is no discrimination in any form mentioned above in the awarding of any city contracts, and that the city manager and the city attorney are directed not to award any contract or to associate with the city with any employer who has engaged in unlawful discrimination and has not taken appropriate steps to remedy said discrimination, and that the city's procurement man, manual and policy 109 be updated to reflect this directive. I would also say that I believe that this is a living document, that as things change, where I'm sure some of this will be challenged through the court system in the state of North Carolina, that as they do change, that we should change with it, and that whatever you have advised us, our city attorney, Mr. Joy, that if it is contrary to that, then we would make some amendment to the con, to the, to the agreements that we're just talking about just now. So could you explain for the record to the community your position and why you feel that we can't do what you, what other cities have done, in your, in your opinion, sir?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. I want to begin with just a couple housekeeping items. First of all, this presentation, and I believe these two items, ordinance 10 and resolution 1, they work together. This presentation will cover both, and I will ask council, when the time comes for you to consider them, to move from one and then to the other, considering them together as a somewhat solid whole. The next thing I would like to say is that I want to go over exactly how we got here and what the intent was, as well as the legal environment that we are working in. First of all, let me point out, as the slide shows, that both the resolution and the ordinance are focused on and tailored to sex discrimination, sexual orientation, gender identity, and pregnancy, to be specific. This also includes transgender. That came to us after the Boystock decision in June of 2020. It was a major focus, and we focused very narrowly on that decision and the protected classes that have been defined under federal law. You will note that the resolution covers more because that is not an ordinance that will be enforced. It is a resolution that guides how we, the city, move forward in our own interactions. So let's point out a couple things. One, the resolution goes to city actions, city contracting. It basically says no discrimination. We're not going to engage in it. We're not going to put up with it. One thing that has come up, and I'm stealing a little bit of my own thunder from a later slide, is we have language in there that says an employer that continues to allow it. Well, when you employ folks, you can always have a bad apple. What we're looking for are employers that when they discover something is going on, they act appropriately. If they act appropriately, then they're doing as they should. They're doing right. They shouldn't be penalized for it. It's the actors who know discrimination is happening and fail to take any action to stop it. Those are the folks that we are looking to cut our ties with. So in moving on, let's talk about the proposed ordinance, specifically some of the nuts and bolts. One, out of the gate, it would not be effective tonight. It would be effective essentially in 30 days, September 17th. That simply gives the community time to digest it, to understand it. It gives the manager time to direct and train the folks that would be enforcement for the city. That, that's a common means that's used of the cities and counties that have passed it. I think only a couple have made it immediately effective. Most make it effective within a month, three months, or even six months. So moving through, as I said before, we have tracked the Federal Civil Rights Act definition of both protected classes as well as public accommodations. And let's make that crystal clear. This ordinance does not go to private employment. We're not stepping in that realm, and I'm going to explain why in just a second. What it does go is to public accommodations. I also want to note that you have heard folks say that the enforcement or the penalty is not enough. I certainly respect that position. I would say that of the other cities who have passed this, there are cities who have not put in any amount for their civil fines. They have left it to, if they end up in court and they sue, they will simply ask for damages. And that's a number that we don't have any idea what that would or would not be. Other cities have been as low as $50 or $100 each day in all of these cities, including our own. Each day that you continue to commit the same violation is a separate violation. We have put in a escalating penalty. And how that will work is the first time will be a warning and education. Many of the cities have their own, what they call a conciliation process, which is effectively that. They're looking to remedy and rectify, not necessarily punish. If someone can't get on board with that and they continue to violate it, our penalties go up quickly. 250, then 500, and then it's 1,000 after that. And if you get a second 1,000, we're going to look to take you to court and bring in an injunction against you. And if you violate a court order, then you can actually go to jail. So we feel that these penalties are actually quite effective. Notice that there are some cities, four out of the nine, have had a criminal penalty. That's a class three misdemeanor. That puts it up to the judge, what he would do. Ours is civil only. It's with the majority of the cities that have taken action on a non-discrimination ordinance. So let's talk about public accommodations. What exactly are we regulating? We track the federal law because that is the body of law that's best established. That is what folks are used to. There's a lot of case law out there that we can turn to for guidance. It includes specific examples such as lodging, ends, hotels, motels, restaurants. Where would someone need to go? If they are acting in commerce, you go to get lodging, you go to get food. Entertainment is included in that. It is a case-by-case review every time to look at what is a public accommodation. I will tell you, the case law on it, the courts have generally taken a very broad reading of that. So essentially, if you're a business affecting commerce, most likely you're a public accommodation. We have, we in this ordinance have respected all of the federal and state constitutional exceptions to that. I hear a lot of folks ask about the masterpiece cake exception, which is extremely narrow, but we respect any of those federal or state constitutional exceptions. And the way it's written, if the Supreme Court comes out in two months with a new exception, our ordinance simply follows that. So we don't have the laundry list of exceptions. Some cities have as many of, as 13 or 14 exceptions. Some have the language that respects all exceptions as laid down by the cases. Some do not. So with that said, let me move, let me make one note. Federal public accommodations law does not include the protected class of sex. The protected class of sex is what sweeps in sexual orientation and transgender, gender identity. It's not there. There is a bill in Congress, HR 5, that is up there to remedy it, but it has not been, yet been passed and signed into law. We are simply correcting that locally until such time as the federal government might see to correct that. And then we would reevaluate and see exactly where we stand legally in that event. So let's get out of the weeds, and let's look up at what other jurisdictions have done. As you have been heard and been told, as of today, and this is changing, we added two just last night, nine cities, four out of the top 10, and three counties have passed non-discrimination ordinances. They can do this now because HB 142, which was the compromise bill that came after HB 2, while it continues to apply to ban local government regulation of restrooms, changing facilities, and so forth, we're not touching that. We're not allowed to. It had a section in it that said no local government could enact or amend, and notice that language, enact or amend. There were some ordinances already in place that just had to stay there. An ordinance regulating either of two things. One is private employment. The other is public accommodations. We have focused on public accommodations. Notice that, that, that ban expired on December 1st of 2020, as the mayor was saying. So the question now turns to, can we regulate those two things? Before I get to that, let me say that of the ordinances we've seen, all of the 12 do regulate private employment. We have seen a great range in variation between what protected classes are regulated. Some have religious belief or non-belief, others don't. Some include creed, some don't. Some include genetic information. A few include political affiliation, and one even includes source of income. There is some consistency, but it is not perfect consistency by far. We've seen the penalties, as you heard before, vary quite a bit. The exceptions vary quite a bit, as well as the investigative mechanism. Several simply do as we have done and simply direct the manager to enforce it like you would any other city ordinance. Others actually have a commission set forth, or they have investigative practices that are a bit more elaborate than what we would have. So with that said, let me move to my recommendation and the reason for it. My regu, my recommendation is that we regulate po, public accommodations. The reason being, our authority to do so is far more clear. It's very unlikely, in my opinion, that we would be preempted. We have a clear niche. Federal law does not regulate sex in the realm of public accommodations. I think that the door is certainly open for this city or any city in North Carolina to do so. Now, this is the hard part. Private employment, as I have been told quite resoundingly, other cities have passed these ordinances. So if other cities can do it, why am I recommending that Wilmington not do that? Well, very simply, the law is not clear, and after reading that law and carefully considering it, I believe that it is likely that our, our Supreme Court would find that we do not have the authority to do that. Let me give you a little bit of background, the, more so for the public, who I do not expect to be scholars in municipal law. I know council has heard this before. North Carolina is what is considered or called a Dillon's Rule state, meaning cities do not have general authority. They only have the authority granted to them by the legislature. Because of that, we have to look at what has the legislature authorized us to do. There are two ways to look at it. One, the legislature can pass a local act that allows a specific city to do a specific thing. An excellent example of a local act is New Hanover County, and every city in it has the ability to regulate trees. We have a specific local act that allows us to do so. We also have a general ordinance-making statute 168-174. That's the framework. Now, let's fill in those gaps. A local act cannot be used to regulate four things: labor, trade, mining, or manufacturing. We have a 2003 case. It's called the Blue Cross Blue Shield case. It was out of Orange County. There was a local act that specifically allowed the regulation of private employment, public accommodations, and that's exactly what Orange County did. The Supreme Court struck down that citing our state constitution, which forbids the regulation of labor and trade via a local act. Why does that come into play? Don't we have a general ordinance-making power? Yes, we do. Orange County cited to that in the Blue Cross Blue Shield case, and the Supreme Court said that's, that empowerment is not broad enough to give you the power to regulate private employment in a comprehensive manner. That comes into play. That, that case, I think, is critical for what we were doing. That you can look at the details of the case. I've had many conversations with Equality NC's extremely good lawyer, several other good lawyers. And one thing I think all of the lawyers can agree is you cannot guarantee that the court would or would not find the authority with cities. My recommendation is we do not have the clear authority to do so, and I would recommend that we not do so until we have greater information from the courts, and whether or not they will support this authority, and whether or not the legislature may take action to support this authority. Also, I note that when you step into the realm of private employment, preemption is possible. The question is not, did you have the authority in the first place? The question is, did some level of government superior to you do the exact same thing? If you read 168-174, if your elements are the exact same thing as a state or a federal law, then you are preempted, and your law is void. In this case, and if you will notice in Charlotte, that ordinance, the attorney recommended that they not regulate private employment in, with employers who employ 15 or more employees. The reason was, federal law regulates that particular area. 14 or less, federal law does not. So he was certainly very well, very aware of the preemption issue. My analysis of Blue Cross Blue Shield, and the second case that came, King versus Chapel Hill, leads me to believe that the courts would not support local authority to step into the regulation of private employment, and hence my recommendation. So let's move to the resolution. The substitute resolution that the mayor read in, its purpose is to make it clear that the city stands against discrimination. That's my first bullet up there. I promise I won't read the rest of the slide. Effectively, it has become clear that many folks in our community are concerned that if council takes this step, this is certainly not a step as far as other cities have done, but if councils takes this step tonight, does that end the conversation? Are we done? Well, the answer is no, certainly not. We'll continue to look at this. We will monitor the law, the courts. We will watch what happens, and then we will come back to this camp, this council with a report of where do we stand with discrimination? Is it rampant? Is it where we want it, which is as small as possible, minor fluctuations here that just take a little bit of education? We'll ferret that out. We'll watch the law, and we will come back to council with a report. And once it's clear whether or not we have the authority, council will hear that. And if we do have the authority, then that will be brought forth for council to consider, and hopefully with all the facts. So lastly, I would like to turn to some frequently asked questions, some of which I have already covered, but I want to emphasize it for the public so that we can maybe forestall some of the concerns. First of all, does this regulate bathrooms or locker rooms? I had that question presented to me just this morning. The answer is no. HB 142 does not allow that. Just take a look at section 4-4, sub E of our proposed ordinance. We're making it clear, we're not going beyond the authority we have, and clearly we don't have that authority. Next, why is the first offense a warning? Well, one, that is actually in keeping with what other cities have done, and the trick is, we're looking for conciliation and education. We want to resolve the issues and educate. We're not out there to punish. We don't mind penalizing when it's appropriate, but we think the first time, education is the right way to go. Next, why were other classes not covered? Well, one, our ordinance, which is what we enforce, we tracked the existing federal law, the existing protected classes. Others could certainly be added. I would ask that if others are going to be added, that that be done at a later time. I see no reason to hold this ordinance up, waiting to see whether we should add other classes. Also note that our resolution, which is not something you enforce, that we have broader classes in there, and we certainly could add to it if council was, to determine that's the right thing to do. Last, will the city monitor the courts and the state of the law? Absolutely we will, and we will be talking to our folks in the community and the organizations that are that are involved in this. With that, Mr. Mayor, I am ready for any questions council may have.
Do we have any questions for our city attorney? John, going back to the case with Blue Cross Blue Shield, because I know that you've, this is where you're hanging your hat in regards to what we can and what we cannot do. That case, and I guess I'm asking this, is that I know that you've had a lot of discussions with the attorney from Equality NC in respect to this, and you've had, I would say, a disagreement of opinions here, but they also, some understand that both of you have also indicated that this could be, as they say in basketball, jump ball. We don't know what the court might or might not say. Obviously, you're advising us as elected leaders, you're our attorney, you're our city attorney, and that's you advise us on legal matters, and we don't really want to be challenged, but at the same time, we also want to abide by the law. That's the oath that we all take, is to uphold the laws of the state, and you think that in this particular case, it's pretty clear that we don't have that authority.
Mr. Mayor, yes. I find not only the holding of the case, which certainly, when the Supreme Court held that the general ordinance power does not allow, it did not go into great detail. That's certainly the case. But if you read what's called the dicta, the part where the court is just explaining itself and what it's looking at, it went into great detail in historical research about local acts, and when you have a patchwork of local regulation, how it creates a very difficult environment for commerce, for trade, and that's why we have that constitutional amendment that says you can't regulate such by a local act. Based on that dicta, based on the holding, based on the fact that the Supreme Court said, no, the general ordinance-making power does not include the ability to have a comprehensive scheme of private employment. And I note, even though Orange County had a public accommodations portion of it, this was an employment case, and the court made it clear, this case, this holding applies to private employment, not public accommodations. To my mind, I believe that the court is most likely to strike down any local regulation of private employment.
So I'm not an attorney, but if the case law is already in place and is already set, why would there even be a challenge then? I guess what I'm saying is, you've got other attorneys that maybe have given differing opinions on this, and you've obviously given an opinion here, and I know that all attorneys have their own opinion, and one thing I've realized, I know about you guys, you all have a different set of opinions, but I guess if the case law is clear, or is it not clear enough where this thing would be challenged in a court of law, within another court order or court decision would then make it much more clear?
I would.
See what I'm saying?
I would hope that it would. The King v. Chapel Hill case, which was a towing case of all things, did get into local acts and the power of the legis, or excuse me, the power of local governments based on the general ordinance-making power 168-174, and it actually split the baby, if you'll excuse the expression. It allowed the regulation of towing, but not the setting of towing fees. So what that told me is that the Supreme Court is going to very judiciously guard the limits of what the general ordinance-making power is. And Mr. Mayor, you're absolutely right. Certain areas of law are clear as can be, and as a lawyer, you're extremely comfortable telling your client you can or you can't because the law is clear. In this area, I suspect that every municipal attorney around the state is extremely uncomfortable because reasonable, sharp minds can read that case, and they can differ.
Got you. Okay. Councilmember Spears?
John, I'm just gonna read my questions right off my paper. How long has staff worked on this ordinance and resolution?
The actual language of the resolution, we've only worked on for the past several days. As far as the research, and as far as the research, and going back and reading the case law, and engaging with Equality NC and other attorneys around the state, that went back into 2020. We knew the sunset date of December 1st, so it certainly was foreseeable. In fact, the Metro Mayor's set up some calls and reached out to begin those discussions early on.
Okay, what about loopholes?
Loopholes?
Right. With the public deeming this ordinance and resolution not being strong enough, you know, what risk of loopholes do we have? Because I say that, and I'm asking these questions because however this thing goes, it won't be you and staff that the community wants to lynch publicly. It'll be us. And, you know, because that's, if you saw the articles, I don't know what paper I saw then, or where online I saw, it was council was doing this. And so, you know, we didn't, we didn't come up with this ordinance, we didn't draft this resolution, and, you know, let's be honest, we didn't work with you all to get to this point. But we'll wear the, you know, we'll bear the burden of whatever happens tonight, so that's why I'm asking these questions.
Those are very good and fair questions, and I will say, every law can certainly have flaws in it, can certainly have loopholes in it. In fact, you heard with the LDC tonight, we know that there's going to be a debugging process because in a body of law, there's always something that you didn't foresee. What I would say is, we have relied upon a body of law, public accommodations from the federal side, that's why we did it. We look to what's a body of law that is already out there that has dealt with public accommodations? Are there loopholes in it? I'm sure there are. Can I point to some? Well, there are some exceptions out there. I think the Masterpiece Cake case that the Supreme Court decided a few years ago is an excellent example of trying to balance competing values and rights. The loopholes I see in this are, with the federal definition of public accommodations, you're looking for things that really deal with commerce. We followed that, we tracked it. If you have a private club, that's not going to be covered under this. And it is a case-by-case analysis. We would have to look at any given factual pattern and determine, is this impacting commerce? Is this something that we can fairly say is a public accommodation? Courts have generally swept in most things that hold themselves out and invite the general public in to do business.
And how much longer does it take to enhance these items? And I'll combine these two questions, and how long before we actually work with the public?
What I would say is, I'm happy to engage with the public tomorrow, happy to talk to folks, and I will say, we did take into account a large amount of input that came in the form of letters and in our talks with Equality NC. Frankly, I was dealing with a former Court of Appeals judge on that, and he absolutely is well-respected and has a lot of information. And I looked at it, followed his analysis, didn't agree with the final result, but that's normal among lawyers, we don't always agree. I would say that, no, this conversation's not over. What I would say is, I would recommend that we not deny someone who could use the protection this ordinance offers today, just because it maybe doesn't cover things that folks think maybe it should or maybe it shouldn't. I would say, now's the place to start, and then let's have that conversation, let's do that research, let's get the evidence, and let's decide where the right place to end is.
Mr. Barnett?
Thank you, John, for all the work you're doing. One of the comments that one of the speakers said earlier, she mentioned, nothing about us without us. Nothing about us without us. And my question is, and I think Councilman Spears kind of helped me lead into that, just want to make sure that in this 45 days, because I like the resolution, and in this 45 days that we make sure that everybody's at the table. Okay? And then one of the things that I was reading, and I just needed some clarity on, they talked about things like hair. Not that I don't have hair, but just some of my relatives may. But they talked about hair and pregnancy. Explain to me how that's not included.
What we did for the ordinance itself, which is something that we would obviously enforce, you don't enforce the resolution. We tracked the classes that have been identified and defined federally as a good, solid foundation and starting point. Some of the other factors out there that have come about have not been through that vetting process. When I look at the natural hairstyle, when I look at the other cities that have included that, I do find variations. Some cities just say the term "natural hairstyle." Others get into natural hairstyle and texture, it goes a little bit farther than that. If you look at the Federal Crown Act, which has not yet been passed by, I believe, either House of Congress, it goes into natural hairstyle, but it doesn't necessarily get to the level of, I think, specificity needed to really make it work well. That doesn't mean that it can't be added. It means that for this ordinance, we were going with effectively what is the core and what has been defined federally, and our focus was on exactly what had come to the forefront, which was the sexual orientation, the gender identity, transgender, and that's because of the Bo stock case, and I promise not to get too deep into the legal weeds, but the Supreme Court in June of last year handed down Bo stock, which essentially said the term "sex" includes sexual orientation and transgender, and that has swept in gender identity as well. That was our focus. This is a somewhat narrow ordinance because we were trying to get the focus, get started with it, and then we can look at other factors, such as marital status, familial status. Some places have veteran, some have your political affiliation, some have your source of income. All of that will take a lot of time to dig through. I didn't know that council wanted to wait before it stepped into the arena and said, you know what, we're going to provide some protection for folks in the area that we do feel like we certainly have the authority to do so. Not stepping into the area where it doesn't appear under the case law that we do, but I did not see any reason to not go ahead and bring this forth to council as a good starting point for a good discussion with our community.
Okay, and so obviously, this is not something that you just pulled out of a hat. It was something that you'd been working on a while.
You are right about that. I will say that I spent a large amount of time going over, hashing, back and forth, discussing what was our authority on private employment, because that seemed to be the area that was perhaps the greatest focus, but after going through that process, I feel confident that the Supreme Court will not support that authority under existing law. They'll have to make new case law, in my opinion.
Right. I like the idea of educating too. I think that we don't need to punish people, we really need to educate so that folks will know their behavior, their thoughts, you know, are in the wrong place. And that's what we need to do for the whole community, I think. All right, thank you, sir.
Hey, John, as a council member with dreadlocks, I think, I think the hair was a, should have been a no-brainer. You know, because that's the reality. I was sharing the story earlier. When I was a teenager, fresh out of high school, I hadn't had dreads at the time, but I had braids, and I worked for a local company here, and the manager came to me and was like, hey, man, what's up with your hair? I was like, nothing, you know? And that just, it stuck out to me. He, you know, he really verbalized how much he didn't like it. He didn't do anything about it. He suggested that I do something different with it, or whatever, but we see how that worked out. But, you know, it's the reality for some people more than others. Clifford, he doesn't have hair, he's not gonna grow hair, you know, and everybody else here, you know. You know, it's pretty normal, but to be on this path and to have been on this path for a while, you know, I have had to encounter some discrimination and some battles based on hair. And, you know, to be honest, the hair doesn't dictate what job I can or cannot do, so just thought I'd throw that in there for the people with hair.
And councilmember, I will tell you, you are one of the people I certainly want to interview and discuss some of your experiences. I think that would be invaluable in the work we have ahead of us.
Okay. Anybody else? I just, I know that we talked about passing something, and I think it's very important that we show the community that we are serious about this, but we do want to have a conversation because there's a lot more work to be done. I do not want this to feel that this is the end. It's not. We've got issues about hair and other things, we've got immigration status and other things that we need to contact about dress and things. I've talked to some people on the C-Rac Committee today, and I do think it's important that we have this dialogue, but I think it's also important that we, as a city, also show that we have to move forward with some sort of an ordinance in place. And then, if the court makes the determination, and we feel that it will be challenged at some point in time, probably within the next year or two, we'll know very quickly what that position is, and then we can move forward from there in addition to what we've got now.
But I want, I just want to make sure this doesn't seem rushed to the community. And so, if, and we can, we can tell by the emails that we've received, and, you know, the people who are in attendance tonight, that maybe we should go back to the drawing board, because, you know, up until all these other cities did, you know, pass these ordinances, it wasn't at the forefront of our mind. And so, you know, what's another week or two to have conversations with organizations and people who really want to see this thing be the best thing that the city of Wilmington can put forth? And that's my recommendation. So if I need to make a motion asking that, you know, we go back to the drawing board for, until the next meeting, then, you know, that's my motion.
While you may not have spoken to some of the people in the audience here, it's my understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that you've had in-depth for months and months and months and months conversations with NC Equality, Equality NC.
They are the opposition to this. They will not celebrate God, and they're not our friends.
This is not a public hearing, sorry about that. But would you just talk again about that when you first started speaking with Equality NC about this? And we get what you're, some of us, anyway, understand what your assessment, a legal assessment is, but there's laughter and so forth in the audience of the people that are here, feeling like we've just pulled this rabbit out of the hat in the last couple of days. And, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought that you had spent a good bit of time pondering this and researching this to be careful.
And mayor, mayor, excuse me, can I second his motion so that we can continue the discussion?
We have a motion on the floor by Mr. Spears, we have a second to that by Mr. Barnett.
Yeah, just to continue the discussion.
That's fine.
And to answer your question, Mayor Protem, yes, I first began talks with Equality NC back in November of last year, and that grew into several phone conversations. I was introduced to their attorney, his name is Christopher Brooke. He and I have had a number of phone conversations, a number of email exchanges. He has laid out his legal analysis. I asked him if he would put that in writing so I could do, as you said, ponder it and really go over it and have it in hand while I read Blue Cross Blue Shield for the 10th time. So I focused on the legal analysis. C-Rac had sent a number of letters, starting in June of 2020, then in January of 21. Their position seemed extremely clear. I was working on the legal analysis. I conferred with the mayor a number of times, he was actually called by the Metro Mayor's a number of times. So it has been a, quite a journey legally, working through what is our authority. Once I was able to perfect that, it seemed that going ahead and offering protection to at least the core where we knew we could, with the ability to come back and add in, after further discussions, any other factors that were appropriate after we had vetted them out, that seemed to be a good path forward. Now, certainly, it's the pleasure of council.
So what I hear you saying is, you've been working on this for the last 10 months?
Essentially, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And I will say, there was a pandemic involved, so.
Okay, and in your process, the process of working- And, okay, and in your process, process of working with this for like the last 10 months, you have met with many groups in the community, or?
I met with Equality NC, and I have attended a number of C-RAC meetings. Now, I cannot say that I have went out and met with other community groups. Frankly, I was focused on the legal side and doing what we could as soon as we reasonably could, and that's based on the law.
Okay. All right.
John, but both Equality NC and C-RAC don't approve of this.
I don't, I will be honest with you.
I spoke with Jen, Jen Johnson this morning from, from C-RAC, and she was, she not in support of this.
At, at the special meeting on Sunday night that I attended, it was clear that C-RAC did not support it, and neither does Equality NC. I had a conversation with both their executive director and their attorney just a few days ago, I believe Thursday of last week. When I say I'm not sure that I understand their position, I certainly understand that they don't support it, and I understand why, in that it doesn't go full. What was told me is that a half step is worse than no step at all. I'm not sure that I agree or understand that position. I would think that offering protection as much as we can, as soon as we can, would be an advisable thing, as long as folks understand that that doesn't check the box, we're done, the dialogue's over, and that's simply not the case.
That's understood, but also, this thing doesn't have to happen in a vacuum, you know? We, we could motion to go back to the drawing board, not only meet with NC, I mean Equality NC, C-RAC, the NAACP, whomever, the Latinx community, anybody who feels discrimination. And let's, let's be honest, we're talking about the perceptions of, of council members, and I don't know how, how many people sitting here can, can give a, an example of being discriminated against. So, you know, that's, that's my point of view. I'm, I'm, I know my expertise in, in the discriminations that I've dealt with, but I also know that those discriminations amongst, amongst certain people are interchangeable. And, and so, I think that's what we're hearing from the community. And, and I think it's only fair to, to go back and try to strengthen this thing, and because we represent the people, we, we can't come up here and, and talk, I can't tell you what you need in your house if I don't come there, if I don't have a conversation with you. Can't tell you what you need in your community if I never come there. And so, this is where we are. And, you know, I'm not trying to be difficult, but I think some of us, and I say this respectfully, are out of touch when it comes to discrimination. There's a, there's a level of privilege sitting on this dice.
Could, could we, could we not do that with this resolution in that 45 days? Isn't that what that 45 days is for?
Well, the 45 days was to appoint a, a group to work on some of the specifics that the folks from C-RAC and others want to talk about. I think the issue goes back is, this is two lo, two-thirds of the loaf of the bread, and the thing that the Equality NC wants is the, the piece in respect to regulating the small businesses. And what John has shared with us is that he doesn't feel, in his legal opinion, that we have the right to do that. So you're either gonna override what the city attorney is recommending, or you're gonna move forward with something that, thing. I, I think it, it covers the public accommodations, which is what we want to do, it covers what the city's policy is in regard, respect to discrimination, and it doesn't cover the last piece that they really want. They've had other nine other cities that have done this, and I think that what you'll find is, that they are gonna be, there's gonna be a challenge to this in the court system. If the court says that we have the right to do it, then we can definitely put it back into the thing. We're not saying we're not gonna put additional things back into the policy.
Okay.
And it's gonna be a living document.
Right.
And we have to take those things into concern. I hear what you're saying, Kevin, and I hear what you're saying, Clifford, but there's other issues in here in respect to, to, to other groups of people that are being discriminated that, that we can have broad discussions on. But this is something that I think should be ongoing, and we're, we're gonna reach out and talk. I know that's not gonna make folks happy, I get that, but because we're not going exactly the way they want to, but I have to base it on what our city, or at least what the city attorney is advising us. And I have to take an oath of office, take the oath to uphold the laws, and he's telling me that we're gonna violate the law, so that's where I'm at. We have, we have, we have a motion on the floor by, by Councilmember Spears, seconded by Councilmember Barnett.
And, and actually, I seconded it just for discussion's sake. So I'm really in favor of the resolution, so that means I'm gonna have to withdraw my second.
Okay. All right, so we'll go back to the original motion to adopt the ordinance prohibiting discrimination in public accommodation within the city of Wilmington. So we have a, I'll make the motion. Second by Councilmember Barnett, discussion. All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes six to one. Is there a motion to waive second reading? Motion made by Mayor Protem Haines, seconded by Councilmember Barnett, discussion. All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That fails for lack of unanimity, so we'll hear this at our second, our next city council meeting. That brings us to our next item of business, which is item, let me see here.
R1, Mr. Mayor.
R1, and I don't have it in front of me. R1. R1 is a resolution affirming the city's policy of anti-discrimination in the awarding of city contracts. This town has to recognize our manager, Mr. Cottle.
Mr. Mayor, I believe, I believe the attorney is going to address this.
Mr. Mayor, in this case, the ordinance was OTN, and the substitute resolution that you had read is R1, so we need a separate vote on that resolution itself, and happy to answer any questions on that.
Okay. All right. All right, so we need to make a motion to affirm the city's policy of anti-discrimination in the awarding of city contracts. Which is, Council? R1. We have a motion made by Councilmember Robin Barre, seconded by Mayor Protem Haines, discussion. All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes six to one. And I have lost. That was it? Yeah, that's it? Okay. This concludes the regular agenda. Are there any items brought forward by our city manager?
Just one thing, Mr. Mayor. The New Henry County Board of Health has moved to implement a mask mandate, and that will begin Friday at 5:00 p.m. So we are taking appropriate steps in city buildings to make sure that that happens. Just wanted to remind you that effective next week, everyone will be wearing a mask while in a city building. That's all I have.
City attorney?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. My office will be producing some FAQs for the mask mandate, thinking that will be helpful. And also, just to make council and the public aware, with the passing of the LDC, that will set off a number of projects for city staff, one of which will be the traffic schedules and truck routes, and reviewing that, and being sure that's in good shape. And another piece will be reviewing the rules of order. The Governance Committee, over a year and a half ago, if not two years ago, directed staff that once the LDC was done, to look at the rules of order, to work through our quasi-judicials, but we'll use this opportunity to present an entire update. The rules, I think, could use a little work.
Okay, thank you, sir. Madam Clerk? Mr. Grady?
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Barnett?
Yes. I had the privilege this week, Friday, to go by the Harrelson Center to see the End of the Summer presentation by Voyage. It's an organization that we helped to sponsor through the Rise Initiative. And they did a lot of science projects, and I was just really impressed with what they had done, and was just so excited to see their, their presentations. And one little girl, I think her name is Amy, said she's gonna be an astronaut, and I made a promise to her that we would get her an astronaut in Wilmington that she can see. So that's, that's one of the promises I'm putting in writing, and I've already talked to Tom about that, we're gonna get that through the Parks and Recs. Because what I've learned about kids is that they can't be anything they don't see. And if they can see it, they can become it.
Absolutely.
And so, that's, I'm excited about that. And everybody, please, wear your mask. Well, you're gonna have to do it now, but wear your mask.
I'm gonna go to the left now. Ms. Spears?
Yes, sir. I want to congratulate Captain, this is an early congratulation, to Captain Kelvin Hargrove. Thirty years of service, will be retiring. He's doing a countdown, so yesterday was 15 days, today is 14 days away from retirement. Congratulations, Kelvin, for, for a great body of work. I could go on and on and on. I'm proud to call him a friend, and it's even funnier to say we didn't start off that way. Congratulations, Kelvin.
Congratulations. Mr. Henderson?
Mr. Robin Barre?
Mayor Protem?
Yes, on a much lighter note, it, when we are back here in this building, if you will look around, you will notice that we have had some improvements, that we, the floor has been refinished, and believe it or not, even though it looks exactly the same, it's all new carpet in the building, and it actually has a pad underneath it, so, which it did not before. So the carpet is no longer ripped and perhaps moth eaten. So, anyway, we are trying very hard to, to not only sustain, but to improve Thalian Hall as their center of government in Wilmington.
Thank you. It's been a long day for me. I've, I've started earlier this morning in, in Raleigh, and there is a bill in the House of, in the state legislature from a representative bail for $200 million for flood resilience and stormwater projects for this community and for this state. I shouldn't say it's just for this community, but this came about because of a lot of hard work on behalf of 60 elected officials in eastern part of North Carolina that came together in the aftermath of Hurricane Florence to talk about flood resiliency and the impacts that flooding was having in eastern North Carolina, which has now since has gone throughout the entire state of North Carolina. We have a very good chance that that bill is gonna be passed. Obviously, it hasn't gone to the Senate yet, and I'm sure when it comes back from the Senate, it'll look a little bit different, but we had good conversations today with members on the Senate leadership that are very supportive of the bill, and we feel that we're gonna get something out of it, and it's gonna be something productive. And I just want to say thank you to Tony McEwen, who's our legislative assistant for the city of Wilmington, who has done an outstanding job in, in, in working with the legislators and then getting us the appointments necessary to talk to them. Also want to recognize Commissioner Jack Newt from Pender County that was with me this morning, as well as Mayor Terry Mann from Whiteville that was also there. But there's been a lot of elected officials that have been part of this, and it's paying dividends, and this is a tremendous thing for our, our state, but it's a tremendous thing for our region, for eastern North Carolina. So on behalf of all the citizens of Wilmington, thank you for taking an interest in your government, we stand adjourned.